Opportunities for elected and appointed officials to meet. Jerry was at the Southern Maine Managers Zoom meeting this morning. We've been doing every month, an opportunity for managers to hear about what's going on in their communities, but also talk about issues that may be coming up or things that are before the legislature that are of concern or interest.
Today's topic was AI.
Today's topic was AI, and I wasn't quite sure how to introduce the topic, so I asked ChatGPT-4 to write me a summary of developments and the pros and cons of, yeah, I know, right? Of AI. I asked it to do this for me in 250 words or less. It failed. It was 290 words.
You think you can get that right?
I know, but otherwise, it was pretty good. So also other things, planners, sustainability staff for communities that have them. One thing that we like to do every January or so is what we call Chairs in a Circle. This is an opportunity for board chairs and vice chairs from around the region to get together, because we're limited to no more than two from each board. It's not a public meeting. It's not a publicly noticed meeting. It's an opportunity for chairs and vice chairs to be able to interact freely and understand, you know, what works in their communities, or hear from others about their challenges and, you know, maybe share a little wisdom. We also are a vehicle for bringing communities together so that you can have an impact on decisions in Augusta and Washington. Somebody I worked with once said that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. Through us, Durham and the other communities are at the table in many of these discussions. We're careful about how we approach issues with the legislature, with Congress, because we serve a diverse range of members. But we make sure that as a region, as a membership, that we're bringing your interest to decision-makers in Augusta and Washington. So, having introduced us to you, our agency to you, or actually your agency, because you're one of our members, and having us get to know you a little bit, about tonight's meeting, what would you like to get out of it? What are your desired outcomes? What I'd like to do is just to go around the room and just quickly write some things down on the flip chart, and then we can come back to it at the end of the meeting and see whether we accomplished what we thought we would accomplish. So my goal, not by knowing as much as I should have about what you're presenting, was really to learn about GBCOG and what Durham can get out of it, and how we could take advantage of what services we're not utilizing at this point, and steps towards taking advantages of the services you provide that we can use. Okay, Heather?
I'd like to facilitate a discussion, or have you facilitated a discussion, so that we can arrive at what our board's priorities will be for the year or a determined amount of time going forward would be?
Yeah, setting priorities is important.
My, I would hope that we could develop some general knowledge, just basic knowledge of how the board should be interacting with other boards and what, how they should be facilitating things within the town and acting. And then the confines of a select board per se rather than individuals.
The role of the board.
The role of the board. Okay, thanks, Rich. Joe?
Yeah, and that was Rich, the one under there, yes. That's the roles and responsibilities of the board, the interaction, you know, again, of not only the board, but the interaction with town manager, how that works, the interaction within the board itself, and the structure of that, and how that structure is executed on a weekly, monthly, daily basis. Communication lines and communication are very important.
So how to communicate with each other?
Yeah, well, in law, yeah, the lines of communication, yes.
Okay, Joe?
Well, going last, I have the smallest pot to pick right here. I kind of echo Rich and Joe's topic of roles and responsibilities of the board. And then I also like the idea of a prioritizing things and maybe facilitate a discussion or something along those lines. So, nothing new, but definitely agree with what's up there, so.
Well, not totally last?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess for me, where the town of Durham is just taking on a new form of government with the town, what's the expectation? And how do we manage those expectations between?
Perfection, Jerry.
That's all we ask. It's not a lot.
So basically managing the expectations and workloads and that sort of thing.
So, and Jerry, you're talking about expectations that the board and you have of this new form of government, but also expectations that the board may have of you?
Yeah, and the day-to-day operations and how much we can get done in a year with the staff that we have and that sort of thing.
I'm just going to add, setting reasonable expectations, because I think that's what you're getting at there, isn't it?
Yes, that is.
Perfection, being the, being the goal.
Well, and actually, I'll add, as a desired outcome, I won't presume to speak for Christina, she can add her own. But one of the desired outcomes I have from this meeting is having you all feel like you're in a better position to operate as a board, that you're feeling stronger, more confident in being able to take on the challenges that you've all taken on. Some of you have more experience than others, but this is no easy task that you've undertaken. And, you know, I commend all of you for being willing to take it on. It's not easy. And I'm guessing that every one of you has had the experience of learning that everybody up there knows how to do it better than you do. So, maybe by the end of the evening, you'll have a few things up your sleeve that you can use. So to get through this, and actually, we did start pretty much on time. I want to take a little while to give you some background about local government in Maine, and then transition to local government in Durham. So going from the general to the specific. And we've structured this so that, you know, we have space for Q and A and discussion in a couple of discreet places. But it's a small group, so as questions come up or if there's a point of discussion, we can take a moment, but we don't want to get too far off track so that we still manage to get everybody out of here and home at a reasonable time. Does that sound like a reasonable, reasonable plan?
I think we've set a reasonable expectation.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I'm hopeful that at the end of this, we probably won't be able to actually do your prioritization, and we probably won't be able to define all of the ways that you want to interact with each other, the manager and the public. But we, I hope that at the end of this, we have some direction about what the next steps would be. And GBCOG or others could help you with it, or you could do it internally, but they could get you to the place where, you know, you're operating with confidence and with clarity about how everything should work together and how you work together.
So we'll talk a little bit about local government in Maine. We have cities, we have towns, we have towns with different forms of government. We have cities with different forms of government. But why do we have these at all? And what you'll find is that throughout all of history, you know, people have needed to have some kind of rules, some kind of structure to help them live together in community and to provide services for the common good. Three examples I chose come from our own tradition, the Declaration of Independence, the US Constitution, and the Maine Constitution, all of which speak to government being instituted for the common good, or words to that effect. You can reach further back to ancient Babylon, Egypt, Rome, and these societies, these cultures, all had some rules about how society operated, how communities operated, how cities operated. The thing that sets these apart is that they are based in forms of representative government that derive their authority from the consent of the government. You'll see that in our founding documents. So that's really what sets, I think, our systems of government, federal, state, local, county, apart from some of these earlier ones. Obviously, a lot of countries have gone on to implement representative and other democratic forms of government. But this is where we are, and this is what we're doing. So government is people. Government is people coming together to solve problems, to address issues, to make rules for everybody's safety, for everybody's common good, and to provide services collectively that can't be provided individually. So, again, our own history of self-governance isn't new. This goes all the way back to pre-revolutionary times, to the time when we were still part of the, well, it wasn't called the United Kingdom, I think, at the time, but part of the British Empire. And royal governors were appointed to govern various parts of colonies. Colonies often had general courts, which are analogous to legislatures today, and they have certain degrees of authority to make laws. And they granted charters, or they incorporated, I don't want to use the word charter, because that tends to mean something else now, but they incorporated towns, and they allowed townspeople, or at least some townspeople. It helped if you were, you know, a white male over a certain age or owned property. In some cases, you had to belong to a particular church, and this is, remember, all pre-revolutionary time. But there was still a recognition and a need for people to come together to solve common needs and address common problems. They could establish officers to carry out approved purchases, purposes, someone which might have been purchased, and make decisions. So even going back to pre-revolutionary times, you'll find, if you go back and read old town meetings, as I have in some communities, you still read the same language from, you know, 200, 300 years ago that you'll read today in the warrant. We tend not to talk, you know, so much about constables anymore, but there's usually someone who's charged with, you know, giving notice to the people that, you know, there is a meeting on such and such date. So, and you were talking about the warrant earlier, you know, for accounts payable, but same thing for town meeting. Following the revolution and getting to statehood, we inherited a lot of our forms of local government from Massachusetts. We were part of Massachusetts up until 1820. Remained largely unchanged through the 19th century, where the legislature could incorporate towns, and then the legislature could grant charters by legislative act to cities. Towns didn't have charters. Cities had charters. And those were granted solely by the legislature. There was no process other than that, unlike there is now. During the same period of time, local governments took on more responsibility and became, even then, even in the 19th century, more complex, and the public expected more services. Schools, and this goes all the way back again to pre-revolutionary time. Roads and bridges, some of the earliest expenses, you go back, towns needing to spend money to fix a road or fix a bridge. Wouldn't surprise me at all if you had similar, you know, articles on the warrant for town meeting. I didn't read it. I should have in preparation for this. But care of the poor is something that has traditionally, in Maine anyway, in New England states, been primarily the responsibility of local governments.
Jerry, do you have the title of overseer of the poor?
I know, overseer of the poor.
That's a vestige.
Yeah, yeah, been there on that. And of course, public safety, and you could add, you know, public health there as well, but public safety, fire, police, and so forth. We've seen continually growing needs on the part of the public for services, growing towns, growing cities, transportation networks that require more professional management of local government. And this started really in the early 20th century, if you're familiar with the period. So the progressive reform era of the early 20th century was a reaction to the machine politics and just the really awful conditions that a lot of people lived in. You know, cities were, not all, but many of them, especially the largest ones, were run by corrupt organizations. We might call them, you know, crime families now, but the progressive reform era was a response to that, was a move to create more professional government at the local level, particularly in cities. The establishment of nonpartisan elections to take party politics out of it, and some of the dynamics that go with that, but also the advent of professional management. Early on, a lot of town and city managers were engineers, because a lot of where towns and cities spend their money is in infrastructure, roads, bridges, and other infrastructure. Other aspects of the progressive reform era included the institution of civil service, so the notion of people being hired based on qualifications and promoted based on merit as opposed to patronage. Out of this also came the council manager plan. And I'm just going through all this to give you a sense of where we've come from, where we've gotten to with local government. The first council manager city in the United States was Stoughton, Virginia, in 1908. And Auburn, Maine, right up there, was the first one in Maine in 1917. And as a graduate of the University of Maine Public Management Program, when they still had one at the Orno campus, we always were, you know, pretty proud of, you know, yeah, we had one of the first ones in the country, Auburn. And having grown up in Auburn, I felt particularly proud of that. And the Town Manager Plan, which extended the role of town manager to communities that wanted to adopt it, was first enacted in 1939. So we've got a long history of local government, local self-governance, and professional management in Maine. Before we move into some of the more detailed parts of local government, something that I took from my earliest days as an undergraduate student at the University of Maine, and throughout my career, and something that you come into contact with on a regular basis, Jerry comes into contact with on a regular basis, is the fundamental differences between government and business, between the public sector and the private sector. I'm sure, you know, we've all heard said, I'm sure we've probably all said, that, you know, this, excuse me, government should operate more like a business. And I think it's fair to say that there are many principles that we can take from business to use in government. There are a couple of things that set government apart. One is operation in the public interest. That public benefit has to come first in any decision that is made, in this case, by an elected body. Somewhere underlying all of that, there has to be public benefit involved. There has to be a legitimate public interest in a decision, in a regulation, in a purchase, in a contract. You don't have to overthink it, because it's usually pretty self-evident. But underlying everything that cities and towns do is public benefit. Another thing that makes cities and towns different is the ability to regulate, to control certain aspects of how business is conducted, how things are built, what people can do, when, where, and how. This is the police power, this limited ability of local government to adopt regulations to protect public health, safety, or welfare. And that's another term that you'll hear regularly, is protection of public health, safety, or welfare. That's synonymous with public benefit. If you can't, at the end of your logical chain, come down to some straight-faced definition of public health, safety, welfare, benefit, then you might have a problem. Local government is also charged with protecting constitutional rights. Local government, particularly for employees, for example, who have served their probationary period of employment, under a ruling of the United States Supreme Court, have deemed to have acquired a property interest in their job. And as you know, now, some of the language of the Constitution, I think it's the 14th Amendment, prohibits the government from depriving anyone of their property without due process of law. So, once someone acquires a property interest in their continued employment, you have to follow due process steps. If you're going to suspend them without pay, if you're going to demote them, or you're going to fire them, you have to, there are specific steps that you have to go through to demonstrate due process. I don't want to get derailed into the details of all of that, but that's a fundamental difference that makes being a public employer and being a public employee different than being a private employer and a private employee. Very different employment environment. So those fundamental differences, you know, we'll set those aside for the moment. But I think they're really important for you to understand when you try to wrap your heads around why cities and towns operate the way they do compared to the way private business or nonprofit organizations operate. So those are all things that cities and towns have to deal with. And even though they come in different shapes and different sizes, local governments have essentially the same purpose. So, in Maine, there are really five major ways that local governments are structured. So town meeting, select, and or more inclusively, town meeting, select, board. And actually, they did update the law. I studied local government law in Maine when it was still Title 30. They had rewritten and recodified it as Title 30A. But in the process, they've also updated the language to make it more gender-neutral, make it more inclusive. There's town meeting, select board, and manager, which is what we got now. There's town council, town meeting, council manager. This is, these are communities that have charters, but still have town meeting. I worked in one of those. Wyndham is one, Standish is another. There are a few others that still do that. Town meeting still is responsible for adopting the annual budget and really not much else. There's council manager, that's a city form. Mayor council, also a city form, and there are some variations on this. I know Durham had a town administrator before you had a town manager. That's common. Also here, administrative assistant to the select board, similar idea. Heather?
Can I ask you a quick question? So town meeting, council manager, the town meeting approves the budget, but other things that we have on our warrant, that like to buy a fire truck or to make changes to our land use ordinance, that all happens at the council level?
Generally, it depends on the community's charter, which, well, and which we'll touch on. But really, a charter is essentially a local constitution that much like the federal or state constitution do in defining the roles of the different arms of government. Charter does the same thing at the local level. Typically, in a town meeting, council, manager, community, town meeting adopts the annual budget, any amendments over a certain amount, the issuance of bonds, again, typically over an amount. So it can vary somewhat from town to town. But a lot, the major appropriation and bond issuance or debt decisions are reserved to town meeting or the voters. But the town council does everything else. It hires and hires and fires the town manager. It may appoint other officials, they adopt and amend ordinances. So everything else the city council would do.
Thank you.
So some other terms that you'll hear, worth spending a little time on. Municipality, state, or town, doesn't matter. So if you're reading through Title 30A or other sections of Maine law that deal with municipalities, they're talking about you. So municipality, state, or town. Legislative body, what's a legislative body in Durham?
The residents.
The voters, town meeting, right. So it's the voters at the polls or referendum. It's town meeting, that's when they're assembled, whether it's a regular town meeting or a special town meeting. Those voters gathered as town meeting are the legislative body. You are the municipal officers. So whenever you run across the term municipal officers in state law, that refers to the elective governing body, the elected executive body, typically governing body.
So you, the small officer, have to be elected?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, except in the case of a vacancy, and there's an appointment. Yeah, then somebody can fill in, but it's usually just till the next election. Governing body refers to the select board, council, same thing. Executive body isn't one that you'll run into very much, but that would also refer to the select board in this case. Municipal officials, pretty much everybody who is appointed to a position for the town or works for the town can be called a municipal official. The line between municipal official and municipal employee is kind of blurry. Really kind of depends on the position they hold. And I'd say if it's, you know, a department head, so, you know, a road commissioner or fire chief, you know, anything, you know, department head level or higher, or a special position like assessor, is a municipal official, as well as being an employee. I don't think you, you probably wouldn't do this without a paycheck. I wouldn't.
No, no.
Okay, so a trivia question. What's the difference between a town and a city?
It's a population.
Okay, population.
How well is it incorporated, charter, charter?
Whatever they choose to call themselves.
Oh, okay. So actually, a population is not part of it, though.
It's a carryman of the city, right?
You know, it's very easy to think of it that way, because large towns often take on the aspects of a city. They have, you know, built-up downtowns, they have, you know, the infrastructure, they have, you know, more services and so on. So not in any way an unreasonable guess, and that's what most people would think. But it is the way they were incorporated and where and how they got their charter. Since constitutional and statutory home rule, so this home rule, I should have added to this, is the ability that the state gives to cities and towns to determine how they will govern themselves. Cities and towns are creatures of the state. Remember, I said earlier that towns are incorporated by the legislature? The only reason cities and towns exist is because the legislature has said they exist. For those towns that had, you know, royal grants and charters before the revolution or weren't granted by the Massachusetts General Court, when we were still part of Massachusetts, were assumed to have been granted charters by the legislature when we became a state in 1820. And from 1820 until constitutional and statutory home rule were adopted by Maine in the late 60s, the only way you could become a city is by special act of the legislature. The legislature had to grant your charter, and you became a city. The legislature had to grant your charter and you became a city. Now, so, now the distinction is a little fuzzier because when home rule was adopted by the state, all the cities that had been granted charters up to that point were deemed to have been granted home rule charters and now they can amend their charters the same way everybody else. Probably more detail than you really need. But it's really all in how they came to be and what their formal government is. So, what about local government here? In Durham, as I understand it, before 2021, Durham was a town meeting, select board, or town meeting, selectman, former government. At some point, the town decided to hire a town administrator. And after 2021, you have had a town manager's position. So, aren't an administrator and a manager the same thing? Another trivia question.
No.
No? How are they different?
The administrator serves the board, as does the manager, but the manager, the board might transferring power over to the manager. The manager is now responsible for the employees, except for the town. We're just more policymakers now.
Okay. Yeah, so, an administrator and a manager often, you know, look and sound the same, but in fact, they are different. Managers derive their authority from charter or in the case of a town that's adopted a town manager plan, those sections of state law that define what the town manager does and what the relationship is between the town manager, select board, staff, and so on. I've been an administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen in Canton, New Hampshire, in Bristol, New Hampshire. I became town administrator in Bristol, New Hampshire. Any real difference? No. It was a shorter title on my business card. And I spent 22 years as town manager in Wyndham. A lot of what I did from one community to another really didn't change very much. The degree of authority, I had to do things on my own, did change. And that changed particularly as town manager, as town administrator or administrative assistant. Your authority is whatever the select board delegates to you, that they can delegate. Remember, I said before, whenever you encounter the term municipal officer, that refers to, in this case, the select board. If there is something that the state law, that state law requires the municipal officers to do, unless it says, or designate, or delegate, you can't delegate it to anyone else. That's reserved to the select board. And, you know, likewise, where it says, you know, the town manager may or shall, then that's the responsibility of the town manager. One thing that I valued very highly in my roles was the respect for each body's part in the work. The council, the select board. I was very jealous of protecting their authority. That if it was something that the council or the select board was supposed to decide, I made sure that I protected that, that I, you know, that it didn't allow somebody else to kind of make that decision on an ad hoc basis and kind of skirt around the boards, like, no, we don't do things that way. This is a decision the board has to make. I'm going to make sure that the board has the opportunity to make that decision. Whatever that decision is, I'll give them the best information I can. I'll tell them what I think. At the end of the day, it's their decision. So, no, administrator and manager are not the same thing. So, again, here in Durham, the voters, either at the polls or as town meeting, elect the municipal officers, that's the five of you. They also elect representatives to the school district board of directors. And in Durham, as in many, but not all other communities, the budget committee. So, other things that the voters do is approve the municipal budget and enact and amend ordinances. They can also approve the issuance of bonds, you know, I don't think you go into all the detail, but these are the big things. The select board proposes a budget for approval by town meeting. I know you have a budget committee and the budget committee conducts its own review of the budget and makes its recommendations. An interesting aside is that there's very little mention of budget committees in state law. It's only in passing when it comes to articles proposed by the select board is if a community has a budget committee established by ordinance, by town meeting article vote, or the voters otherwise, it has to carry their recommendation. Doesn't say how budget committees are set up, doesn't say what they do, doesn't say how they should be made up. Just says, if you have one, they have to have an opportunity to weigh in and recommend, make a recommendation on the select board's proposal. So, the select board also, as we talked about, appoints the town manager and other officials that are prescribed by law or ordinance. My understanding is Jerry as town manager and the town manager's position in Durham is town manager, treasurer, tax collector, town clerk, overseer of the board. Chief cook and wine washer?
Yes.
Okay. And appoints people who work as subordinate to the town manager as other deputy town officials or as town employees. There may be other officials that could be prescribed by law or ordinance. This is the case in some communities that the select board would still appoint. You can adopt policies by laws that could be relating to, you know, kind of the administrative operation of the town. You may have things like a fund balance policy, or a purchasing policy, or personnel policies. Those are all policies that can be adopted by the board as administrative tools that help provide direction to the manager in conducting the affairs of the town. One key point about the select board, and this is true of councils too, is that as a collective decision-making body, you only ever act as a body. It's whatever decision comes before the board, the board decides, that's the decision and that's what, you know, this hypothetical situation is Jerry's responsibility to carry out. And I, I know that, you know, boards don't always agree on everything. You know, it could be, you know, four-one votes, it could be five-two votes, it could be, you know, not five-two, three-two, one more time. But what we come away from that decision-making process with is not the vote count, but what was it, the decision? That it's the select board's vote, it's the select board's decision. You have your debate, you have your opportunity to, you know, hear about the issues, to learn about the issues, to gather information, but you make a decision as a board and that's the decision that goes out the door. The town manager, as I said, among other things, proposes a budget for review by the select board, appoints officials and employees, accept those reserved to the select board if any, carries out laws, ordinances, administers, policies, plans that the select board adopts and serves as chief executive and administrative officer of the town. Staff, it's everybody else, the people who are hired. Well, people who are hired by the town manager and work for the town. Volunteers, boards, committees are either elected or appointed. As I said earlier, you've got an elected budget committee. These are established at the municipality's discretion. You're not required to have one, but I know Durham has had one for at least 90 years.
Like the 19th century, so I think he was town leadership?
Yeah. So, you know, it's, you know, long-held, it's part of the structure, it's part of the culture. These are positions that are elected by the voters in April, as other officers are. And they are charged by state law to make recommendations on budget proposals by the select board. And really, nothing else. That's the only, that's the only place they're mentioned in state law. But I know, you know, many communities, I've worked in communities that had budget committees and, you know, they become part of the fabric and part of the structure of how things work. And, you know, either, you know, you figure out how it works or, you know, there's some definition about, you know, who does what in the process.
But Tony, the municipality has the ability to kind of define the relationship in some way with the, with the budget committee?
Yeah, the only thing state law says is that those articles have to carry a recommendation by the budget committee.
That you can work with them in ways that you define?
Right.
I have a question about this, it's not an appropriate time.
Yeah, sure.
So, we, it's often said that the, and this clarifies it a little bit, but before, something that you said was the opposite of this. It's said that the budget committee makes recommendations on the select board's budget. So, and the way that we do it is that Jerry proposes a budget, we make, we, we go, the select board goes through it, it then goes to the budget committee, and then it comes back to the select board. And that, that is consistent with state law. Is that correct?
Well, it's the select board that proposes the budget that goes to town meeting. State law isn't that specific about the order in which things happen, except, you know, in the town manager plan, it says the town manager shall prepare a budget for review by the select board. What happens to it after that can vary a little bit. So, the select board, you know, can review it and not review it and send it straight to the budget committee. It's, you know, entirely up to you to define how that part of the process works. But the budget that goes to town meeting is your budget. It's your proposal. The budget committee gets to weigh in and say whether they recommend what you've proposed or whether they recommend something different.
Okay. So, the process you just defined is how you've always done it? Right. It doesn't necessarily mean it's always, it's how it's always going to be done. It's up to you to decide how you do that. And our budget committee does have bylaws. I, I don't know them. I would like, I'm going to review them just to see what details in there. But I think you've, that.
Yeah, did that help?
Yep, absolutely.
Clear things up, I didn't mean to introduce something.
No, it wasn't that, it wasn't, the, the, when you said it before, it just, you didn't say that the budget committee reviews the select board's proposal. And so, I just wondered if that step had to happen in between.
Well, again, all state law says is that the selectmen's proposals, if a community has a budget committee, have to carry the budget committee's recommendation. How they arrive at that is really however you and the budget committee define. And, excuse me, the, the budget committee's bylaws are the budget committees. They, they adopt them and that's how they choose to conduct their business. They aren't law for the rest of the town. They don't control how you do your budget. It controls how.
The honorary house board?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's how the, those rules are written. If you look at them and read it, it is basically how they are supposed to govern themselves and review what the select board gives them and make a recommendation, just as he's stating here. Basically, a, so my recollection of what this is.
Yeah.
So, the reason why I was asking, just in case anybody cares for context, is because, right, we're on a year, our budget year ends in December and then we, you know, we're, we have town meeting at the first of April. And so, there's, it's a very, very, very tight window and there's a lot of issue, I think, around how tight that window is. And so, I was just wondering, you know, what the process was by law versus, and if that's different than what we do. Just trying to like, maybe, I think what the outcome should be is that we move our fiscal year, so with June, July, June. But in the meantime, I just didn't know if there was any, you know, discussion to be had about our process.
The only things that really control the process for municipal budgeting are when the warrant has to be posted for a town meeting, when you have to hold public hearings on the budget. How you come up with the budget, other than the fact that the town manager plan requires the town manager to prepare and submit a budget to you, how you get from there to public hearing and a budget that you've adopted to send to town meeting is entirely up to you.
And when you say public hearing, do you mean a presentation of the information? Or does public hearing include public input?
Well, this is the legally, when I talk about public hearing, I'm referring to the legally required public hearing before the budget is adopted. And at public hearings, the public is allowed to speak, you know, a public hearing, where they're to hear what the public has to say, whether it's, and you'll encounter this with other things that, you know, maybe the select board has to hold public hearings on before a vote. Those are all opportunities to hear from the public about whatever the issue is at hand.
So, does our town meeting count as that? Because they get up and speak at town meeting? Because we don't do that. We don't provide an opportunity ahead of town meeting for people to make comments on the budget.
They can make comments after the budget is done, yes. Well, so, in a town meeting community, see, the difference here may be that with a council, before the council can adopt the budget, they have to hold a public hearing. In this case, I'm not sure if there is a public hearing required on the warrant before it's posted or on the budget before it's sent to town meeting. But remember, the town meeting acts as the legislative body. So, that's not a public hearing. In that instance, they are the decision makers. They're the ones who are considering the articles on the warrant, whether to approve them. They are the legislative body in that instance.
Yeah, so maybe we need to just make sure we're checking all the boxes with that.
One call on me, though, part of the reason we're so tight is because we choose to be that tight, because we don't, they want actuals.
Yeah.
And that's what makes it extremely tight.
Right, and you did a really, you did a really good job advocating for projections and I'm totally in your corner on that.
If you go to, if we go to a fiscal year, you won't have actuals.
Right.
And I might say that if the, if the issue is that the window is so tight, start with that question, how do we make it less tight? Maybe it's projections, maybe it's changing fiscal year, maybe it's changing the process. So, you know, so that there are fewer steps or, you know, perhaps your budget committee meets with you early on, you set like parameters together, you meet together. Like, there could be other ways that you can answer that question. So, start with the big question and be open to multiple ways to solve for it.
And we have started that because what we have instituted in the last three or four years now is a CIP capital improvement committee. It looks at all the capital improvement projects back. We go, we try to start in August. And then we end up, you know, bettering out all of infant questions that you get of, oh, why do you need this, what are you doing with this? That gets presented to the select board and that then becomes the priority list. So, we recommend a select, a priority list to the select board. But the idea is like, like pull other people from like the budget committee back into that CIP process early, so they get that view early, even though they don't have the projection on the budget items that you just, you know, normally have to go and fulfill like salt and sand and whatever else and other topics, at least get the capital stuff out of the way early is where we're heading to pull those people in. Because a lot of times, that's where most of the questions are. Why do you need a fire truck? Why do you need a plow truck? You get that done early with those budget committee members or a few that can bring that message back, that'll make the process more chilled ahead of time. So, you're really then starting in August, you're not starting in January. And quite, quite frankly, the actuals is Jerry's problem. He's the town manager, right, just like you just said. All of those actuals belong to him. He needs to be able to sell that to the select board when he presents that budget, right? And then we sell that to the public, the rest of the town. And then we sell that to the public, the, the rest of the town at that point, right? We need to say yay or nay on that, and with input from the budget committee. So, that's kind of how that all is, is supposed to work. I mean, the budget committee really doesn't get into, or not really supposed to get into, all the knits and naths of what he actually goes and presents.
But they do.
But they do. And that's a problem, because that, that's where we have to start dividing and getting that all separated, because it doesn't matter how many reams of paper Jerry buys out back, it really doesn't, that's not where the money is. The money's with the capital stuff, and, and if you look at the budget committee rules and regulations, it kind of focuses on the capital projects the most. The rest of it is maneuvering in, in, in the grass, you know? Whether you raise the, you know, whether the state goes and allows everybody to make another dollar or not, really isn't the budget committee's problem, nor the select boards for that matter, right? That's just something Jerry has to deal with, with funding his people properly to keep us and all the employees happy, and keeping us whole.
Keeping the doors open.
Keeping the doors open.
That's really important.
Yeah, keeping the, the, the knowledge there, so.
I, it's really about the, at the end of the day, for the managers, it's about the tax impact. Where, is there an impact?
Right.
Where is that in the budget? Let's talk about that and see what we can do about that budget.
So, I would just like to make sure, just to reiterate the fact, there is no opportunity ahead of town meeting for the public to weigh in on the budget. And I just want to make sure that we're doing that properly, because that is a complaint of residents, that they don't have the opportunity to do that. And if we're supposed to be making sure there is an avenue for that, I think we need to make sure we are.
Yeah, I mean, I can double-check that, and I know, you know, Jerry can check that as well. One resource, and I'll, I've listed them at the end of this slide deck, that you may already be familiar with, is, and they're both from Maine Municipal Association. The first part of the conversation tonight was drawn in large part from a book that the Maine Municipal Association last published in 2016, an updated version, called Local Government in Maine, Government is People. And it lays out a lot of what we talked about tonight.
It's a great bent, I agree.
And, and it's, it's a great resource. One of the things that it's, I think, really useful for is in helping to have conversations like this. Because I'm sure we've all been confronted with a device, or, a device, that somebody handed to you, and you didn't know how to use it. Or you get in a strange car, you know, you're, you're driving a friend's car, and you've never driven this car before, and you're trying to figure out where the wipers are, where the lights are, because you didn't have any instructions. Or somebody handed you this and said, here, you figure it out. It's, it's really frustrating to be handed a tool or a device and not know how it works. So, part of, you know, what I used to do with, you know, my counsel, and I, I hope something that, that you take away from this is a better sense of how it works, and why it works the way it does. Because I think many times, people, and I've seen it happen countless times, people come to the podium and have a certain set of expectations about how something works, or why it works the way it does. And it's not their fault, they just don't know. So, part of what we deal with is the fact that people don't understand how it works, don't know that, you know, public benefit, public health, safety, and welfare have to underlie all the decisions, that you are bound by, you're bound to observe and protect constitutionally protected rights for employees and others. It doesn't just apply to employees, it, it applies to people affected by, you know, regulations, for example, that, that you might make. So, that's a really useful resource. The other is much longer than the sixty-page Local Government in Maine, it's the six-hundred-page Municipal Officers Manual that MMA puts out. They're all on their website, they're all in PDF. So, you don't have to print them out and deforest anywhere. But the Municipal Officers Manual is a great resource. It's much more detailed, and even as detailed as it is, you, you kind of have to take them, say, okay, how do I apply, how do I apply that in the local context? Because there are four hundred and ninety-one cities and towns in the state of Maine, we're all subject to the same state law, but because of differences in form of government charters, some of them might take a slightly different shape that you don't expect. So, again, two really good resources, one more introductory, really in-depth. Not recommended for bedtime reading, but, you know, if you have to look something up quick and understand, how do we appoint an animal control officer again? You can look that up. I mean, I've found it as, as a resource, having been doing this as long as I have, because things are always changing, and it's hard to keep up with everything.
Jerry, did you have that?
Yeah, I had a question, sticking like with our desired outcomes being understanding roles and responsibilities. You touched a little bit on like the bullet points of select board and town manager. Are we going into that further, or would now be a good time to ask questions about clarify?
Actually, it's my first slide. Right?
Yeah. So, the, the idea was to cover really most of the mechanics in the first part of the conversation, then, you know, talk more about how you go about navigating the different, you know, roles, responsibilities, and relationships. I mean, some of the mechanics we've already covered, but Christina will get into some more of the, the nuances of it.
And also capture some of the questions that you have, like I captured yours about, about the public hearing, you know, and things like that. So, if you have questions that aren't answered, or if you don't, you don't know the answer yet, you have to figure it out yourselves, and we'll, we'll make sure we note those down.
Yeah.
If we have a question about, like, so, like, maybe it's something that we just would like your opinion on, oh, and it goes back to the, how it's just, the language gets carried over as tradition. A few people, and I never even noticed it until somebody pointed it out to me, was that we always say a prayer before our town meeting starts. And a few people have taken issue with that. And I know that that's something that we continue to do, because that's just what we've always done. I don't personally take any issue with it, but I can understand why people do. And I just wonder, either if you have an opinion on, or if you see that other municipalities are updating things, you know, in that sense, as we kind of evolve.
Oh, that's interesting. I do, I do allegiance, but you also do a prayer.
Yeah, we do, well, we don't do a prayer before select board, but before town meeting, we do, we do have a, we do start the meeting with a prayer.
Yeah, I mean, there are still some, the public, I mean, legislature, I believe, still has, I don't know if they have a chaplain, but they will invite, you know, faith leaders from all different denominations or, or faiths to offer, you know, a reflection, a prayer before the session starts. I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I really can't give you an, an opinion about that. But there are instances where, even in governmental functions, those things are done. They tend to be more based on custom than anything else. And I think the Supreme Court has said that, you know, that's generally fine. But I know, again, without pointing too much at the Maine Municipal Association, we, we try to work to complement what MMA does. We're not here to try to duplicate what they do. And I'm more than willing to give them due credit for the work they do and the materials they produce. So, I would check to see, you know, there's, I know there's a moderator's manual that may address that. And, you know, worst comes to worst, no offense, you know, talking with a town attorney can help provide some guidance in those areas.
Okay, thanks.
What about the being supper? You know any towns that are having those after-town meeting still?
After-town meeting? What about Durham?
Durham?
Yeah.
Are there towns still doing that?
Well, I, I don't know, but I worked in one that did.
Yeah?
And that was the highlight of town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, Durham, go to the side room, have lunch, and then come back. A lot of people don't use any of those religions anymore in front of a meeting.
And I don't personally take issue with it, it's just been brought to my attention. And so, people bring things to my attention, I assume that it's, you know, important to them, and therefore, I feel like I should be a voice at the table for, for people that have brought an issue to my attention.
Communities do things so differently from each other, you know?
Yeah.
So, it's really up to you.
Okay, thank you.
So, we talked about the mechanics of local government, and, you know, the, the, that's a bubble, Christina likes to refer to it, GP COG, as the, the plumbing and wiring. And so, you know, we can talk about how things work in statute, or how things work in, in law. As I was talking about managers, administrators, administrative assistants, doing still a lot of the same things, they're not the same, but they do a lot of the same things. It's understanding how things work, and what the different roles are, what the different responsibilities are. But then there's the relationship piece, and how you want things to work, and how you, you know, within those confines, I mean, obviously, you still have to deal with the reality of the way things are. But given all of that, how do you want things to work, and how do you want to work together? That's my segue.
So, Tony, yeah, great segue. So, Tony basically gave you the framework within which you have to operate, but then you have a lot of freedom within that, that framework to define how you want to be together. So, how do you want to set your priorities? How do you want to go about developing your agendas and setting your agendas? How do you want to interact with the public and communicate with each other and with Jerry? All those things usually benefit from clarity. And Durham doesn't have a lot of that stuff written down yet, which is what, what I understand from looking at your website. So, what we thought we would do in this section is to talk about what some of the habits are of highly effective select boards, and go through four kind of topic areas here. Jerry sent you this great little handout from the Maine Municipal Association, which I thought was great, the top ten things. I boiled what I thought out of that down to kind of four major areas. And for each one, I thought I would start with a question for you, so you could define how you do it right now. And I'll be interested to know whether you all have the same answer on how you do it right now, because sometimes what seems obvious to you may not be obvious to Joe, for example. So, we'll, we'll answer that question, and then I'll share some examples of how other cities and towns do things. And I'd like to kind of highlight, and I'm gonna flip this up, highlight areas that might be gray for you right now, like things you want to clarify, or questions that you want to answer together. So, this is more workshop-y. Sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay, ready to go in? So, these are the four things here, which is first to honor kind of the boundaries of that framework, so be very clear about what Jerry does, what you do as a board, and what you can do as individuals, and what you can't do as individuals. And then we'll talk about how to prioritize. And I experienced this in Freeport, when I first got to Freeport, we didn't really have annual goals. A lot of towns still don't have annual goals, and so you don't really know what you're trying to accomplish throughout the year. And when that happens, you get focused on really small stuff that may not matter all that much. So, one of the, one of the things that's really important is to kind of spend some time figuring out what you want to do to lead this town into its future. Then how to have productive meetings? I know, spend some time on that, because a lot of meetings can go off the rails. They can go really late, they can go down rabbit holes, they can focus on things that are important, they can forget about things that are important. And also, they can get really rankerized. Hopefully, you don't have that here, but we watch the press, and we watch the council and select board members around the region, and with the kind of increase in polarization that we're seeing at the local level, things can be really raw and awful out there. So, how do you get ahead of that and make sure it doesn't happen to you? And then how do you have healthy communication, both with each other, with staff, and then also with the public? And we'll share some best practices around that. So, we'll go to the first one on honoring the boundaries. And I think this goes a little bit to Joe, what you were asking to go a little bit deeper. This is a simple, simplified, probably oversimplified set of rules, and you have other actors in town. So, what I thought I would do is just run through it real quick. It's basically a review of what Tony said, but in table form. And then have you identify what isn't clear here for you in Durham. So, if you think about your role as a select board, again, you can only act as a body in telling staff what to do, right? There's, like, one of you individually can't say, hey, we really need to buy a, a, a fire truck, Jerry, go buy a fire truck. Right, that has to be a group decision that you make. Same thing about the tax rate, same thing about policy. You have to act as a body together. And, but the manager has a lot of expertise, and he is in the details. So, he can provide some advice and input to you as you're thinking about what your priorities are. And also, like, you, you need to think about what's the level of service that you want to deliver to your residents? Is it town collected trash? I don't know, probably not. But, you know, you get to decide what kind of level of service you want to provide to your residents. And this is a, this is an issue in a lot of our cities and towns, because as you have more people moving in, some of them come from other places that have higher expectations about what towns are gonna deliver, right? And so, you're gonna have some constituents that are gonna ask you for trash, trash collection. Maybe they'll want curbside composting, who knows? Right, and you have to figure out what you want to do within the tax, taxes that you want to raise. So, those two things are related, what services you provide and what tax rate you set. So, that's like the overall guidance that you can provide as you're developing the budget. And then Jerry's there to execute it for you, but he can provide you advice as you're thinking some of those things through. So, that's our kind of budgeting high-level policy. Then, and, and, I'm sorry, and then you're also gonna be recommending the budget to town meeting. So, you don't actually get to set the budget, like lots of councils, they just said that it's done. You then have to recommend it to town meeting, you also have a budget committee that weighs in. But the manager is gonna originally draft the first budget, and then, once the town meeting has adopted the budget, the responsibility goes back to the manager. He's the one who figures out how best to use those resources that were adopted in the budget. Then we talk about ordinances. So, again, your town meeting is going to adopt your ordinances, but you're gonna want to use Jerry's expertise, or whoever Jerry wants to put on, maybe you're a planner, or maybe you're gonna be working with a planning board, or maybe it's somebody else, right, that you're gonna bring in to help make sure that the draft, the ordinance gets drafted. And then it comes to you to recommend to town meeting. But once it's adopted, it goes back again to Jerry, because Jerry's gonna be the one who has to implement that ordinance. And with policy, it's a little bit, it depends on what policy it is, if it's like a personnel policy, or you gave some good examples of other policies, like.
Fund balance policy.
Fund balance policy, yeah. Again, you, you might want to draw on Jerry's expertise to perform it, and you get to actually adopt a policy, but then he has to implement it. And then, yeah.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
So, when we talk about adopting policy, the select board adopts the policy, recommends ordinances to town meeting, obviously, a lot of work has to go into developing the ordinance before it's recommended at town meeting. Is it the purview of the select board to be the people who initiate, saying, this is a policy we would like to see municipal officials work on and develop, and kind of give that top-down?
Yeah, you, you should be, when you're thinking about what policies Durham needs, you have that overall responsibility of setting the direction for it. So, you could say to Jerry, hey, I really think we need a fund balance policy, and you can even set some general parameters around it, right? You could say, we think the fund balance should be, what's a good example? You know?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent, or you could say, we, we'd like to know what the, what the options are that many towns around, you do a little research on this, bring back the best practices. You can have a very collaborative relationship around that, and Jerry, you can be drawing on his technical expertise, his ability to get research or other speakers in to help him understand it, but then ultimately, you're gonna make the recommendation.
So, in the, like, if I'm hearing from people from the town, a certain, they would like to see us explore a certain ordinance option, I could come to a meeting and say, I want our board to discuss this, if we vote that the board wants to see something like this get worked on. And Jerry can say, okay, this is who I think we have in town, whether it's the planner or the planning board, that can develop that policy, or we need to go outside and get some more help, but that can come from.
It can, and, and you said something really important, which is that you come to the board to suggest that it becomes something that the board does, or directs Jerry to do. You couldn't come and say in the meeting, I want Jerry to do blah, 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 and then Jerry has to go do it, it would have to be the full board decides that.
Yeah, so in this example, would that, like, if I wanted to recommend that we explore a policy?
Yep.
Would it be my job, would I have to come during the public comment period? Or just come as, on the board, say, I'd like to discuss this at the next meeting, could we put it on the agenda?
Excellent question. So, and we'll get to that, which is how does the agenda get developed? All right, and we'll, we'll, we'll come back to that, so, because I'd like to hear how you do it right now, because there, there, you can set how you want to allow for a general. Because there, you can set how you want to allow for agenda items to come forward. You can always say something in a meeting and ask for it. But again, you have to make sure that it was within your accepted process for putting it on the agenda.
Yeah, that's just what I want to understand.
Yeah, we'll get there, yeah.
No, it's just to circle back on that in regards to, I think sometimes people, I don't want to say Joe, but in regards to ordinances or ordinances aren't always like, they don't necessarily develop over a board. Let's say a planning board. Our charter in the past, the way we ran the planning board was, the planning board is an independent board, you know? So another example that might be as far as an ordinance, like a fireworks ordinance that's been brought up to us in the past, it doesn't necessarily entail that it goes to the planning board. That might just stop at this board. So one of the things that we've always been cautious of is interfering as individuals. Like for example, it's easy for a person to say, I've talked to some people and I want to implement this. But doing it in a way that it doesn't look as if it's your personal feelings.
Right.
You know, you should, it shouldn't be, well, it should be, I've gotten five or six letters, I've gotten this, so forth. I think we need to look at this.
Yeah.
So it doesn't come off as a personal agenda. We need to make sure that we're not ever being looked at as we're trying to stir up an personal agenda.
Yeah, and when you say personal agenda, I'm assuming like your own personal interest, like your trade-in, your own financial interest, or your family, yeah.
Or your own beliefs.
Well, this is why I was going to make a distinction here. And different, and this is something I encountered when I started on the town council. When you become an elected official, you have an understanding of what that could be. Some people may take kind of like an approach where they think of themselves more as adjudicators. Like they're the ones there to administer the law. And other people run on a platform and say, I'm going to lower the property taxes, elect me.
Right.
And they have an agenda because they've articulated it and they feel like they may have gotten it from the voters. It's okay, it's a different way of being.
Right.
Different people can bring different things. If I, my personal feeling is it's okay to have your own personal beliefs. It's just that you have to have the whole board agree with you before you take action. So if you really came to this board of select and saying, I'm going to lower taxes, once you get, and maybe people elected you because of that. Once you get here, you have to convince four other people to lower the taxes.
It's still appropriate for you to have that opinion. You don't have to say, I'm only an adjudicator, I'm never going to share an opinion.
You can take whatever approach you want to be to being an elected official, right? And my feeling is like, be an electee, right? People are going to have a different understanding of what they think their role is. And that's okay.
Yeah, in the previous meetings that we've had, we, we're not town councils or we're not aldermen or anything. We want to put our best interest to be in the agenda, in the interest of the town, not in our personal agendas or maybe our political party's agenda or our, for example, we had an issue with a gentleman on board one time with his particular street. You know, where he didn't want-
But that's your own personal interests.
So you need to make sure that you're acting on, if we're a board, that we're acting on the benefit of the entire town.
Which goes back to what Tony was saying for the welfare, the public welfare of the town. Yeah, people shouldn't be getting elected to change, to get the town to plow the road better, right?
Exactly.
But it really does depend on the individual community. Portland, for example, has counselors that are elected by ward.
Right.
And counselors that are elected at large. So for those who represent a particular ward, I think it is appropriate for them to represent the interest of the people that live in that particular geographic area. But, you know, they also have responsibility to the city as a whole. At-large counselors, much like you, their constituents are all of the, all of the city, all of the town.
Not just the people that voted for you or agree with you. You actually are serving everybody.
Even if you're a ward counselor, I mean, you do have the interest of the people in your ward, your district. But, you know, there's still the underlying interest of the city as a whole.
But our ward is the whole town.
Correct, correct. Yeah, you're all elected at large.
It's not just the street you live on or whatever.
You're all elected from Ward 1.
Yes.
So something else that you kind of touched upon, and you may go into a little bit more, is that everything that we give to the manager causes us to spend more money. So if I do five ordinances, I need five planners. The ordinances don't come, I say five, you can have an example. You can't overtax the actual department's staff that you have to go after some of the things. So when we prioritize our list, it needs to be like a top one and two. It's not the top 15 that get acted upon, so.
Which goes to what Joe was saying before about reasonable expectations, given the resources you have.
Because you, you know, affordable housing is going to take up 99% of this year's planners' time. So you, other things are, you know, got to be, you know, off to the side at that point. So when you start setting the expectations, or you go hire, excuse me, or you go hire out other people, in which case you need more money to put in the budget. And you then go and do that in the next cycle. Or you may decide to use some of your expenditures that you already have allocated to do that. But it's really a deliberate thing that we're actually doing. It's a very deliberate-
And some town councils, I'm going to come to you Heather and Joe, but some town councils, like the Gray Town Council, they, the counselors actually took on a lot of work themselves because their staff was really overtaxed. And they developed a spreadsheet that was like, okay, we want to do this, this, and this. Their spreadsheet grew really, really large. And they had, and part of their annual priority statement is choosing what they're not going to do that year. Because it's just like, you know, because the demands are a lot. Heather and Joe.
So just going back to this, I hear kind of a little bit of the conversation that we've been having recently about the ordinance thing. And what I think is important to like reiterate is that we have a town manager that we've hired to do some of that ability to outsource or find resources. We have a conservation commission that took on the huge part of the resource protection changes that we just did. And so while I agree with both of them, with you guys not having context about what it is that we're talking about, which I'm sure we're going to get to. You know, I think that it's a mistake to write it off because it's, I think they both have extremely important implications. And I think not trying to address it through either people taking it on or finding other avenues to be able to accomplish the goal and just writing it off as we have too much other stuff to do without trying to pool in potential resources is important.
So before- I don't want to get into the specific issues that you have to decide. But what I hear is that there is a need to do work that's being asked of the town, by its residents. And there's also a need to prioritize. And the thing that this says is that you as a board need to do that prioritization. And Jerry needs to give you his assessment of what his staff is going to be able to do with the resources, right? And so you have options, right? You can either have Jerry do it, which means he's not doing other things. You can have Jerry hire more staff, which will cost the town. You can have Jerry hire consultants, which will cost the town. Or you can delegate it to a committee or a task force and see whether volunteers can do it, right? So you have ways to do it, but you have to decide as a group what's going to work best with Jerry's input on the resource side. So I'm just going to, is that, am I capturing this okay? What this conflict is about?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's about, you know, what work can be done within resources, right? And then figuring out how you get there and how many, how many things you can do in a year, right? Because you may be really ambitious, you might be cautious. I should say ambitious, cautious, though I'm not like actually pointing at anybody. But you need to work that through together. Yeah, okay, I have one last thing right here. Do I? Oh, just, I think Tony said this before, but your job as the board of selectmen is to appoint the town manager, to evaluate him, to direct him. And his job is to direct everybody else. And some places have really strict rules about that. Like no counselor in Portland under a previous city manager could even talk to a staff person that sat under that manager. Other places are a little bit more, you know, as long as Jerry knows the conversation is happening, you're not directing that person's work, you're just getting information. Sometimes that conversation can happen if Jerry's in the room. That's something that you might want to also work out, is exactly what kind of level of contact you have with staff. But really, Jerry is the only one who supervises and directs staff.
Can I bring up a situation really that happened at our last meeting? So we needed some more information from the fire chief. The fire chief was sitting here at the meeting and we were having a discussion. And I wanted something, information from the chief.
Yep.
And I asked for that and then immediately retracted and said, I should have asked him to ask for that.
Well, if you're all sitting at a meeting together, you can say, hey, fire chief, is this information something you can get? And, you know, and the fire chief can answer for him or herself, right? Right, that's okay.
So what we need to do here is when you go to the fire station and ask, and you're not-
If you were to ask outside the context of this. And the other thing that I would suggest you consider is that if you wanted to say, ask for information of the fire chief and it's not in the meeting in front of everybody, you would go through Jerry. Jerry would get the information, but the information would be shared with everybody. So that there's not, so that all of you, you're all coming here as equals. You've all been voted equally, you all have an equal voice. You should all have equal access to information.
It's like a competitive bid with bidder's questions. The bidders can all ask individual questions, but the answers go to everybody.
Yeah, that's a great analogy. So is that something that, do you have this written anywhere about how communication happens with staff?
No, this is not a law written down.
Is this something that you want to have some clarity on? Please!
Yeah, we don't have any written policy. In the past, ever since we've hired the town manager, it was essentially, you know, other than being cordial, hi, how are you, how's things, blah, 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 how's the family, et cetera. As far as any input towards their work or things of that nature, you're going to look through the town manager. It's not explained to us in the past.
Yeah, and that's totally appropriate. And the only thing I would just say is just make sure you all have equal access. Because I've seen this happen also where, you know, a chair might keep information close and use that as a way to kind of develop more power for him or herself. And really what you need to be doing is working as cooperatively. Given that you're all going to have different opinions under different issues, you really want to have a spirit of cooperation here for the good of your residents.
And one of that's the other problem too, is you can't have the debate over email either, so.
You can't.
Yeah, that needs to be, that's completely off the board.
Yeah, and you can't be more than, you know, two people.
Right, yeah.
So I have a question about the way that our email is set up. If you use the board, selectboard@durham, whatever, does that give the individual the ability to respond? Maybe if we made it so that you can't respond to that email address instead of it coming to our individual?
Self-control, you can't respond.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just think that that might be a way to disseminate information to everybody instead of just-
You gotta look at whatever the content is. Can you reply, can I make this meeting? Absolutely.
Yeah.
Hey, we're going to have an executive session. What's it about?
Right, right, right.
Yeah, I mean, you don't want to go crazy about it and make so many rules that makes it hard for you to do your business.
It's, it's all to social media. You're not supposed to, you're acting as a board, you're going to get to that, right?
We're going to get to social media. I don't have answers for you, but certainly I have questions.
For the record, I do, we've never established a quote-unquote policy of the staff boards, or the, excuse me, the boards, the select boards, interaction with employees. And if that policy should exist, if that's your recommendation, I think that's a policy that we should adopt.
The more clarity there is, the less room there is for conflict that's not necessary.
I think clarity can also offer, with people, with the lack of a policy, people assume that things are behind a closed door. So there's people who are saying, I don't see what the town's policy is on communication. So I'm just assuming that they're talking privately before a meeting. And then people come in, even though that's not happening, people come in with animosity.
Yeah, and conspiracy theories.
Well, and in that case, what you have is Maine's Freedom of Access Act, which you could point to and say, we can't make decisions outside of public voting. Which is why you can't do it by email, which is why you can't do it by social media, which is why you can't do it at the coffee shop. If you're going to meet, you know, more than two of you are going to meet, you're going to talk about town business, it has to be a publicly known meeting. And the public has the right to attend. Public does not have the right to participate, but they do have the right to attend. The only time they have the right to participate is in a public hearing or some other required situation where you're expected to hear from the public.
And I think that it would be helpful to have policies like that so like people know, you email Josh and say, I want to talk about this at meeting. Josh could respond to that person.
Yeah.
You're more than welcome to join the public comment. And that's your response. It doesn't seem like it's like doing select board business, it's just providing information. But if someone says, how are you going to vote on this? That's a kind of a different thing. So I think that that clarity is helpful.
If a voter wants to know how Josh is going to vote on something, I mean, that's a perfectly legitimate question.
Yeah, and you can answer.
If Josh emails the four of you and says, are you guys going to vote on this? That's not okay, right?
Right, yeah.
But we know Josh wouldn't do that.
Bridget, did you have something?
I might now. No, I did not, but thank you for asking.
Okay, I thought I saw you.
I have to.
Yeah, Jerry.
In your experience, how did you kind of regulate the public comment?
Great question, where it gets that too. I'm feeling really good, like anticipating what we're going to talk about. Do you want to move to the slide? All right, so first, we're going to talk first about priorities and we're going to get a little bit more gritty. So my first question to you is, do you have a process for setting priorities? And if so, what is it? That's what we thought we were doing tonight.
Yeah, I don't feel like we have a good one.
We've never had one.
Never had one?
No. Because it's like, for example, like we have ordinance recommendations coming from other boards and they're coming to us where it's rather than us saying, hey, we'd like to see these things explored. Here are our priorities and Jerry's saying, we can only tackle two of those this year. It feels like it's the opposite for us where we're kind of getting the presentation from others. And like to Joe's point, like, oh yeah, you know, the town planner might use up 99% of his time on policy, but we haven't discussed as a select board and shared with Jerry what our priorities are. I think we are under the assumption most of us are prioritizing the housing bill. But we're not discussing the other things and we're not getting the feedback of, oh, there is another available. So we're not quite there, I don't think.
The problem is keeping the boards. I mean, it's very hard for boards, and in particular town managers also, I'll put them in there too, is when a board switches, you don't just switch the whole town and say, we understand you're on this directive, all of a sudden we want you to do a 180 and we want you to go this way. Same thing, let's take like a planning board. They've been on a specific mission for like affordable housing, for example. I can only think of one time where we got involved and said, hey, planning board, you need to stop what you're doing. And that was regards, because we had to make a decision on marijuana. So we had to really act on that. But typically, like for example, the planning board being one of them, we would typically let them act as an independent board unless there was something that warranted or had a concern with, like an immediate concern coming from the state level or things of that nature.
Yeah. Well, I want to know one thing that I heard from you, Joe, which is that it does sound like you've been doing prioritizing around capitalist expenditures.
Yes.
Okay, so there is something, and how does that process work? Like how do you prioritize?
We have a small board, we have a worksheet that we go through. We prioritize according to, does it help the public? Does it help the roads? Does it help, there's like four different categories.
I think I've seen that spreadsheet.
Yeah, so there's like four major categories and then we rate them on, you know, does it help the elderly? Does it help the disabled?
Is it this board that does the rating?
No, no, it's a separate-
It's the capital improvement committee. So you have your own committee for that?
Yeah, we have a committee.
They rate the issues. The way I describe it is the department heads, Jerry and his staff, put together a Christmas list of what they're looking for for the year.
Yeah.
And then that Christmas list will go down to this and they will prioritize what is the, what gift we should buy the most, what is the most important gift we should buy and then rank them in that.
And I have been serving on that board since he was the assistant chair. So it moves, it's, yeah, it's a wish list and that we prioritize.
It has historically only been the department heads that have sent applications to the capital improvement committee.
Yep.
And I think it's worth entertaining, allowing boards, like the historic commission. What are they called?
They change their name.
Yeah, or the planning board or even that type of thing. If they felt like that they needed to be able to submit an application or, you know, whatever, for something that has longevity to it.
Yep.
I think that maybe we should discuss that they have the abilities also.
Wouldn't that be like the planner's role or- They do, yeah, that's what I mean. Like so for example, the planning board wanting something, it goes to George and what's it called? And they put it on their wish list like last- And they put it on their wish list, like last year, for example, the planning board and the planner wanted a scanner because of these weird things.
But does the, does George put, oh, so then George gives it to him and he puts it in?
And then we would review it and then it goes to the cap.
So it's still gonna come basically through Jerry. I mean, all the department heads give those to Jerry. Jerry works with them to go, to go through like, the fire chief needs a truck or the planning board needs something or.
That's fair. I didn't think there was an avenue for those other, anyone other than the department heads to be able to.
Is that procedure documented anywhere?
The CIP's got a pretty extensive procedure, yes. It's a very extensive procedure that they follow.
So it seems to be, but if you were looking at, so for the CIP, you've got a way to figure out what you want to prioritize. But as a town, you don't yet have a way of saying, we're gonna be working on affordable housing or whatever. And I'll, I'll give you some examples from other towns here. So, for example, Gray, they do an annual retreat that involves like chairs of different committees as well as all of the counselors and key staff and department heads to kind of like put everything on the table. And then the, the council will actually make their priorities for the year. In Freeport, when I was there, we got to a place where before budget season started, we had three to five goals that every counselor would email them to the chair. And then the chair would put them all together in a compiled list. And then there'd be a workshop to get to a final set of goals that kind of reflected everybody's perspective. Not every issue, but it compiled and made it, made it small. So here are some priorities that Gray identified in 2022. They wanted to improve their infrastructure in the village. And they wanted to have an inspiring place to work for their employees because they were really dealing with workforce retention. In South Portland, they had a goal this year that they wanted to improve their communications with residents. And they wanted to expand affordable housing. In Freeport, last year, their goal was, they have several goals, that they wanted to deliver the highest quality services within a stable tax rate. And they usually define what the stable, stable tax rate looks like. They wanted to have more transparency in how the town made decisions. They wanted stronger attendance at their council and committee meetings. So they obviously have a problem there. And they wanted to have, increase their stewardship of Freeport's natural resources. That's just a handful of things. And then once the goal is set, then the role of the select board is to kind of keep you focused on that for the year. But it allows you to think a little bit beyond just budget season or, you know, what the, what the budget is for, you know, your road paving or whatever.
Twenty years out, planning.
Yeah, and you can really think about the future, yeah. And, you know, at Chico, we're really in the business of thinking about the future because the world is changing so fast, right? And towns need to be ready to be able to respond to things that happen. But also they'd be able to like proactively plan, particularly for growth and development. There's a lot of pressure on every single city and town in this region of growth and development. So, you know, thinking about affordable housing and thinking about how to preserve your office spaces or fountains, how to preserve your rural character. Those are all things that a lot of cities and towns have prioritized as goals. So I'm gonna just say that this is something, I know some of you expected to do that today. It's a completely different workshop. Because it, no, this is fine, I'm very happy with this also. It's something that sounds like you want to do it.
And one thing that you're not aware, we do have a comp plan that they went through.
Yeah, I helped facilitate your community.
Is that like a roadmap, you know, aside, it's not, you know, doctrine per se, but it's, it's goals for the longer term.
The only thing I'd say about that is that comp plans are comprehensive. So you want to think about, like, if you really want to achieve something, you gotta like an hour.
You gotta an hour down. You can't just go after the comp plan.
Yeah, you want to implement the comp plan, but you want to also do it in a way that you're good at.
You gotta slice it up.
Exactly.
My, my issue with the comp plan is that it was 2018. The world's changed a lot. And in, the comp plan said that our growth was supposed to decline by fifty percent, five years out. And there's, I mean, we're obviously going in the completely opposite direction.
I don't understand that.
I think it's seventy percent.
But let's, let's put that in a, in a bike rack so it goes down.
Yeah, so that's the thing, that's the only thing is that I just, I want to make sure that as we're making ordinance changes, that our order of operations is correct. And that this isn't maybe something that we need to revisit because maybe is it already too outdated? That's the only.
Yeah, that, that's a great, that's a great point. Like what Heather is alluding to is, is really great. And that's typically how the board in the past, like, the select board would gather, we put four or five, it spitball four or five items and we prioritize those on the tag. And examples in the past were, the roads were a mess. We had a couple of road bonds out and we fixed them. That was a high priority. Another quote unquote high priority. The human resource side of the house from the select board is getting a little over the top. I think we need to move in the direction of a town manager.
So you have done this in some way.
Oh, absolutely.
It just might not be dog handed or regular.
I think sometimes with this particular, what we're, we're looking at here is are the priorities gonna be what the select board should be focusing on? Or are we gonna, you know, focus on that or are we gonna focus on what other board should be focusing on?
To give direction to them.
To other, yes, correct.
And you said before, you haven't really worked with the planning board directly except on the marijuana case.
We have, we don't interfere with them in terms of, because usually they're the ones dealing. They, they're getting the input from codes, they're getting the input from the planner and what they're doing. Same thing like any other board in the, in the town, their select board. We don't, they come to us if they need something per se, but we don't set a direction on, hey, I think.
We're not dictating that.
For example, this year, we haven't asked the planning board to pursue anything. They've told us what they felt like they were pursuing.
We asked them to stay past others.
Well, and another thing, so the feedback, like there's been some missing room on the board where it is appropriate to ask the town manager and the planning board to pursue certain things or if we need to wait and let them decide what they want to do and then tell us.
You are the governing, you are the highest authority aside from town meeting. So you, if you chose to, could give direction to the planning board. Now, they have a judicial kind of role as well.
They have, they have two roles, yes. An advisory role and a quasi judicial role. When they're dealing with an application that's before the planning board, then it's hands off. They need to be allowed to do their work, I mean, yes.
As a judicial.
But, yes, but in their advisory role, and again, I think this is where it becomes interactive, can be collaborative. They may have, based on their knowledge of how your ordinances work or changes in state law, they may have knowledge of areas that they think the town needs to work in with respect to its ordinances. So you can collect that information from them, but then go through your own process of saying, you know, we know, we've only got so much time. We know we've only got so much staff time. We've got all of these demands on all of our time. How are we gonna use that? How are we gonna use our meetings? How are we gonna use our staff time? What are we gonna focus on? To the extent we want to spend money beyond that, what are we gonna spend that on? And chances are you're never gonna, well, you never will be able to do it all. Unfortunately for us, our planning board is the most taxed board. It's taxed twice as much as this particular board, whether or not. It is the most taxed board. And that's common in most municipalities, I think. The planning board is the most rigorous and.
You've got a very talented town manager.
So when it comes to the planning board, where it's very important for us to, I just want to clarify to make sure we all are on the same page, stepping into this release facility, discussions are good for. It's very important for us to avoid getting involved when they are doing things like reviewing subdivision application or something like that. That's where it would be inappropriate for us to step in.
Yes.
But when it's determining their other workload, like what they are gonna work on, that it is acceptable for us to say, we want to have more of a top down approach of, these are the things that the select board has prioritized.
Absolutely.
Rather than saying, tell us what you think you should do.
You could, I mean, you could do.
Getting input from them.
Yeah, obviously it's a discussion. Here's what we prioritize, this is a reasonable expectation, not enough time, not enough resources, not the expertise.
We've got these three different things that the planning board thinks we're gonna work on.
But, yeah.
We know we don't have time for all of them. They can express a preference. If your, your judgment is it's gonna be this one instead of this one, then, I mean, that's, that's something that you and the, the planning board, you know, kind of have to negotiate in a way. But you are, as Christina said, you're the governing body.
You're the policymakers, so.
Just one second here, because we keep talking about planning board and planner in the same sentence, that's incorrect.
I didn't say planner.
No, no, we keep, it keeps coming up that way. Our planner reports to the town.
Correct.
I just want to make, so when we go and give the planning board a direction, that doesn't mean the planner automatically shows up to do stuff. That's part of our issue that we need to separate it out. Because the planner only has so many tasks.
Right, but that's.
Well, but this is what it's alluding to every time we talk about it. So I want to make sure we're separating these things out for direction. And when we say, planning board, go do this, and then John says to the planner, hey, I need you to go and look at this now, we got our planning board chair. That becomes an issue at that point, because that becomes a budgetary issue. Because we don't have enough planner's time and enough. Well, I just, I want to make sure we keep this whole, all.
Well, it can be an issue. You're bringing up an issue that could emerge.
It continues to be an issue where we run into.
I mean, the planner reports to Jerry.
Yep, but we've, go ahead.
Yeah, but, you know, this is where, you know, kind of the iterative part of the conversation takes place. Where the planning board comes to you and says, these are the things we think are important for the town to focus on. And you say, as a board, well, pick one, because we don't have the resources. You know, Jerry and George don't have the time, pick one. So you can give that direction to the board. And in that same sense, you know, you can give direction to Jerry saying, okay, through our priority setting process, the planning board came to us with these three things, we picked this one. So Jerry, and through Jerry, George, these are the things that you're going to work on to support the planning board in delivering on the thing we asked for.
I'm gonna go to Josh.
I was gonna say, if, if we're giving the planning board direction, then I think Jerry needs to understand that's where the planner should be focusing.
Exactly. And, and so everybody needs to be on the same page, you know, on this. Go ahead, Jerry.
I think after town meeting, there should be a meeting facilitated by George and myself with the planning board and the select board. And that's where you talk about it in your own, the same room, and now you just hammer it out. Takes one meeting and now we go.
You get it done, yeah.
I think we need, as a board, need to start having more workshops.
That's exactly right.
I agree.
I agree. So I just kind of go back really quick while you're writing what you're writing, because facts are important to me. I, I combined two statements in our comp plan. Over the past five years, the rate of new housing construction has dropped by about half that amount to twelve units per year. The next line, regional demographic projections indicate the number of new housing starts in Durham could decline by half over the next twenty years. So I took the five years from the top sentence and replaced the twenty. So even still, decline by half over the next twenty years, I think it's not even close to realistic. And five, and twelve housing starts five years ago were, were way, way past. So anyway, that, that was my point. I'm just making sure that our order of operations is correct and we're not updating ordinances to an outdated comp plan.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. I'd rather, I'd focus on the comp, I have no problem with it. Because it's, I mean, and I think what's gonna facilitate that, exactly what you just read, is what comes down from August? That's what's gonna, that's what's gonna dictate.
I was gonna say, ordinance should be based on fresh data.
Fresh data, correct, that's a hundred percent.
Okay.
So when the comp plan was developed, that's what they thought was gonna happen. And they, and the mechanism for that thinking was, we're gonna have ordinance to slow that down, right?
We had a moratorium on build the condos for a while.
Yeah.
We only were the last.
I see what you're pointing, but we didn't institute the policy.
And we got rid of a rate of a growth ordinance. And once you get rid of your growth ordinance, you no longer can put a moratorium on building permits unless it's enacted by the select board, which I actually wanted to do so that we could press pause to try to get our ordinance updated to be able to deal with these things. But I know I'm not gonna sell that thing, but.
I think it had, I think it had to, there was a legal issue there too, where we set up a growth industry, our growth zone, where we didn't have, we didn't meet the criteria in the end. We didn't have a section of town that had X amount of road furniture, water, sewer facilities.
So what I'm gonna just say about that, that's a cold issue, right, that you need to talk about? That I would say, let's, let's bump that into your priorities discussion about how Durham approaches growth and development prior.
Yeah.
I like it. No, I like it, I just was trying, because if they're trying to develop ordinance to slow down growth and it's not happening.
Well, part of the problem was, okay, I'm gonna put my little hand on the rabbit hole. This is my next thing, which is like, because this is a big, big discussion, right? Okay, and I want to keep us at the, how are you guys gonna work together? Because you could take this and put this into.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, okay. And I'm gonna skip to my last bullet, which is rabbit holes. I wouldn't actually call growth and development a rabbit hole, but it can be something that can take you off your topics of what you're trying to do. I, I will share, when I was on, in a budget discussion workshop in Freeport, we literally spent a half an hour debating whether the planner should have five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars to allocate it. And, and I don't know if you've ever done anything like that, but I'm ashamed of myself for being a part of that. But I've also watched other boards where there are really big things out there, like growth and development or it could be AI, it could be whatever. And it makes it like, the human nature is to go to the things that you can control. And sometimes you go to the, the micro. And I've seen boards waste a lot of time on very small, minute issues. And there are a couple of ways to avoid it. One is for the chair or even the town manager to say, hey, I think we're in a rabbit hole. Right, and kind of gives everybody a moment to pause and be like, is this really what we want to be discussing? And the other way is to like recognize whatever the issue is. And if it's something that staff really should be dealing with, take it off the board of select and discussion and then say, hey, Jerry, I've got this constituent that's mad that they didn't get the road plot on time. This is, this is an administrative function, this shouldn't be discussed to the board. So I just wanted to bring that up because it can be a real time waster. And the reason I have a clock up here is because you, as a board of selectmen, have a very limited number of hours every year that you can meet together. And you have full time jobs, which means you have limited energy also. So you can't go to midnight and do a good job, right? And in fact, you'll get, you get irritated with each other around eleven o'clock, right? So you want to try to really stay focused.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty, yeah.
Ten thirty is the one we gotta do.
Yeah.
Do you think that when you have a plan and you have priorities that helps avoid rabbit holes? Because I, my understanding of what you're saying is like, when you just feel like you're showing up to a meeting and treading water, finally something comes up and you feel like you can make a change and then you want to jump at it. Whereas if you have those plans, it's like, this is mine or we're working on this big thing. So do you think that can help avoid?
I, I really do.
Because it makes you feel productive every week versus, you know.
And you all have a lot of reasons. You, you, you ran for a reason. At some point, I'd love to know what each of your individual reasons are for, for running, but you ran because you wanted to give something back, you know? I think that probably covers all your individual things. What's that?
Want to make a difference.
You wanted to make a difference. And so when you're sitting here talking about something that's really irrelevant to people's lives, it's gonna be frustrating, right? For you, it's gonna be frustrating for the other people. So to have those priorities set, whether it's like, we want affordable housing for our teachers and families or we want to preserve our rural character, whatever it is that we decide is really important for you, the more time you spend on making that priority something that you're making a difference on, the more you're gonna come to these meetings, right? So the rabbit holes really can, they're like, the energies suck, you know, for, for the, for the meetings. All right, I'm gonna go to the next one, is that all right? Moving on? So we're gonna dive a little bit into how you have meetings. And the first question I have to you is, how does your board of selectmen agenda get set? What's your process? Jerry, take the floor off.
Whatever the issues are, the flavor of that two weeks goes, goes on the agenda.
But who writes it?
I do.
And how does the chair or vice chair have any input into it?
They really don't.
Is there a process if the council wanted to get something onto the agenda? Is there a process if the council wanted to get something onto the agenda?
Um, we've talked about that, but currently not.
How about?
They haven't asked since I've been here. We've talked a lot, how do we get that on there?
Yeah, okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop here and say, this is a great thing for you to clarify. Because, and Joe, this gets back to one of your original questions where you're like, "So what if I think that there should be this fire ordinance that should be explored?" Right? So maybe if it's really informal, Joe would go to Jerry and say, "Hey, can we talk about this?" And you'd be like, being an apple, "But I, yes, let's put it on the agenda." That can work. You could also do it in a way where if a counselor, uh, sorry, if a select board member wanted to put something on the agenda, um, you could email the chair and the vice chair, and ask, and then the chair and the vice chair can confer with Jerry. There are many different ways that you can do it. But it would be good to understand what the process is before it gets to be a place where, say Heather says, "I really want this thing." And Joe really doesn't wanna talk about the thing, and you don't have a way of figuring out whether that thing gets talked about. We're kinda there.
In the past, it's just been a simple email. Anybody could add anything to the agenda, as long as it was requested prior to the agenda most submitted.
So some people have a chance to actually look at it and understand it before they walk into the meeting.
That's not the impression I was under.
Okay, good. Well, let's clarify this then.
But that was to the select board though, right? It was the, it was the select board emailing select board members.
Select board, not necessarily emailing the select board member. They could email, they would typically, like, for example, myself. I wasn't the vice chair. I wasn't the chair. Actually, the last time I'd emailed something, it was a letter to the chair and a letter to, at the time, Rue Glage, the town administrator. "Hey, could we add this to..." It might not be the next agenda. It might be next month's agenda on the 21st, because I had 32 phone calls about kids racing drag bikes. So triple seven, Palo Alto, over there.
I guess.
You know, something like that.
That was my impression too.
So I just wanna make sure that we all have clarity on whether or not that is in fact the case. Okay, what authority does the chair have?
Yeah, because I think in our meeting, it was said that the chair and vice chair have no different authority than the board member. Someone just runs the meeting. So in this framework, the chair would have the authority to say yes or no, adding this or that on the agenda, which is kinda different.
I think it's more, like, there's too many things on the agenda than Jerry may, you know, what you're gonna do this month, next month, and the month after for the 15 issues that show up. So it's more of a, more of a, I think, a priority thing of.
Yeah, we understand that. We're just saying that wasn't.
It can be a priority thing, but it can also be, right? If you have something that somebody doesn't wanna talk about, then suddenly the agenda can become a kind of conflict. Okay, so it can be prioritized only, and hopefully that's only your only issue.
That's our only issue.
But, but you could have a bigger issue. And so different towns will do it different ways, right? So where, in Freeport, the rules said that the chair and the vice chair worked with the managers of the agenda. So it was more than being equal. When you elected a chair in Freeport, that person had some additional authority. And then there are other places where the chair will never speak until everybody else has spoken. And that's more of like a custom thing. And everybody else gets to say their opinion, and then the chair weighs it at the end. Sometimes the chair will actually frame the issue before other people talk. So this is actually a thing to understand what the role of the chair is. Tony, do you wanna add anything on this?
Well, and I think good practice is that everybody has access to the agenda. And what I've seen work is opportunities, and, you know, whether it's at, you know, regular meetings or workshops, however you wanna do it, you have an opportunity for any member of the board to say, "I'd like to see this on a future agenda." And maybe there can even be a little bit of, you know, meeting and planning and scheduling that goes on in that conversation, because these are your meetings. And you're the ones who decide what the town's priorities are and work through Jerry and staff to deliver those. It's this big collaborative process. But it's still your meeting. There's still your priorities. It's still your agenda.
Joe, and then Josh, someone wants to, because I just saw that, I saw that hand first.
My question with that is, with everyone having the opportunity to see what is on the agenda, Jerry does a great job of sending it out before the meeting. But are you saying that everyone has the opportunity to see what the other members have asked to be on the agenda as well? So if I, I get to see, Jerry says, "Here are what was requested, and here's what we put on the agenda." So I at least know that Josh has been asking for three weeks to do something about the trash pickup or whatever.
Josh's floor is yours.
So I think, and matter of fact, being, or recently, we've talked about having an agenda item, I think, that lists the future topics to be discussed.
It was a, it was an agenda item, yeah, to talk about what you wanted on the future.
That's great practice.
And so I think, to me, to address that whole issue is, are there any amendments to the agenda? And then we could talk about it and vote on the amendments to the agenda that addresses.
The only thing about that, though, is that it's not noticed. If we bring up a new topic, does it have to be noticed?
But you're not talking about it. And all you do is putting it on for the next meeting.
Yeah. What I would suggest is that that comes at the end of your meeting, right? And you say, "What are the, what are the agenda items that you'd like the town manager to put on a future agenda?" You guys can brainstorm, you can put it, and then you can calendar that.
Yeah.
That's a wonderful practice.
I mean, that's like a second practice, because the first one, the email practice is probably fine for most items. And then, if there was a walk-on item per se at the meeting, then you could bring it up during that time period. You know, mostly everything else, you usually gotta know ahead of time what you wanna possibly put on the agenda. You know, and again, emergent agenda items are, you know, I don't know, to me, become emergency items, right? Not necessarily just one of the mill business items that we should put on the agenda for, for some topic that comes up.
I mean, that's nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should, you should give people a timeframe to say, "Hey, we're gonna be discussing X," so they can prepare.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be, uh, spare in the moment, "Tonight, we're gonna be talking about Christie Chicken."
It's not fair to the public.
Or something like that.
Yeah.
Well, then I think that you want the public to be able to see the agenda and know what's gonna be on it. So you're introducing agenda items from the floor. Because like, that's different than the private world. Everything else I do, we introduce new business agenda items from the floor at that moment. And it's like, but.
You don't wanna do that here.
As an observer, before I joined, I'd wanna know, because I wouldn't wanna be like, "Oh, they brought this up."
Well, and it gives people the opportunity, if they know ahead of time, to be able to make a public comment on it if they want, if they see an agenda item that's of importance to them.
Well, for example, the.
So aren't you, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, so in, in, in this frame of thinking that if there's an emergency item that wasn't on the agenda when it was published, it can't be brought up? Which is, or you're breaking your own rule, is all I'm saying is.
That's a good point.
Is it's careful, we have to be careful. It's how we're framing things.
Yeah.
Um, and so I'm just gonna throw that out there.
So when I was with the town of Wyndham, for example, and Wyndham's not unique in this respect, the council agenda was published on the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. Nothing could be brought up at the meeting on Tuesday unless, according to the council's rules or procedure, they voted to suspend the rules and add an agenda item. So if an emergency came up, they could deal with it.
Right.
But as a general rule, if it wasn't on the agenda that went out Friday afternoon from the town clerk's office, it didn't get talked about.
So what you're speaking of, that rules, we don't have those, right?
And that's where we're headed in this conversation, because I think that what, what you can do on a lot of these items is to come up with, come up with, um, or select rules and procedures. Give me a simple document that you can build on over years, but it can address Josh's point. Okay, you don't wanna, you don't wanna handcuff yourself so that you can't do an emergency. At the same time, you wanna be able to provide ample notice to each other and the public. There's a rule for that, right?
And I think it's also really important that when we do get that established, that it goes on the website so that residents can see that, because policies have changed.
Yeah, I've only seen two.
And they, and they, it's.
Emergencies.
There was no, there, like, there's no, there's nothing for any resident to be able to refer to, that that is actually the way that business is done. And so I think that avoids that situation.
You're right. It's really, really important. And Joe, you made this point before about people thinking about how things happen behind closed doors as all this scumbagery that's going on. The more you put out. You, the more you put out, and the more you explain to people how the process works, it makes it more transparent, it makes it less frustrating for them and for you, because everybody's dealing with the same information, everybody's on the same playing field. You know how the process works. You know what the rules are. And that's just like trying to play a game where nobody knows what the rules are, nobody knows what the object is, and everybody gets frustrated, nobody wants to play anymore.
And people start getting mad at each other. And you can, you, if you have the rules, it clarifies everything, you can avoid all this conflict.
The, I just wanna say, since I've been here, amendments to the agenda are typically just moving something out of the order that it was written in. That's typically when that happens, like, the town manager puts the board of assessors in the middle of the agenda, and then they're back into the select, you know, I should just put the board of, like, that's up.
Yeah.
He voluntarily always put the town manager's meeting at the end, so everybody's tired.
Right.
And any board, any board member can make an amendment to that.
Right.
Right.
I do like his suggestion, though, about suspending the rules for an emergency situation like that.
There's been two that I can think of, and one of them, we couldn't do anything about. It wasn't anything. It was a, it was a house that, quote unquote, possibly could have needed to be condemned, and they, the.
That was here, I remember.
Yeah, the codes officer was asking. He was just a little naive, but it was really a good job to condemn the house. It wasn't our job. And then the other one is, we had a really big windstorm in October, maybe three, four years ago, which knocked out power for a couple of days, and we had to do something with the warning center or something like that. So we had to call a quick emergency.
So, yeah, so I've covered that here. It's something for you to write a rule about. So I'm just gonna go over a couple other best practices. We talked about defining a clear process for how an agenda item gets added. We, there should be some sort of, oops, can you go back? Sorry. You should have some sort of deadline that you've agreed upon, after which you can't add an item, because there's not enough public notice, not enough time for Jerry to process it. You also may wanna consider being clear with Jerry about when he writes up a staff report and provides you information, do you want him also to make a staff recommendation? Maybe you do, maybe you don't, right? But it's better for him to understand what's expected of him on something like that, right?
I like that.
Yep. And then, and I've had that, when I've served boards, you know, if I'm not clear, like, "Okay, should staff have an opinion on this? Do you want my expertise or not?"
Right.
Okay. And then the other thing is that you should have a agreed-upon time about when the agenda gets posted in advance. You said in Wyndham, it was the Friday before. In Freeport, counselors had until the Tuesday before to provide things. It was, everything was posted on Thursday, gave people, so just decide when it is that you want. Okay.
When do you post?
Thursday.
You post on Thursday?
Yeah, on Thursday, and on either Tuesday.
So Tuesday.
Very, so we're sufficient. And keep going on how to have good meetings. One of the things that's really important is to do your homework. And my question to you is, how do you do your homework? And there's one right answer here. But right now, how do you, as board of selectmen, get ready for meetings?
I review the agenda and, you know, if I need, yeah, here's a researcher's.
Great. I review all the documents that Jerry sends as soon as, you know, the day that we get them. And then the same thing. I'm, I'm new to the board, and I have a lot of questions.
Yep.
And so I try to get as much information on my own as I can ahead.
First year is so hard. It's like a fire hose.
And then sometimes I'll email him and ask him ahead of the meeting, because I don't wanna take up people's time, because I know that my questions are because I'm new.
Yep.
And then sometimes I do have to ask questions in meetings, because I just think it's the most appropriate place to do that.
So there's, I have a little, the last bullet here, and I've seen this happen for boards, is that a counselor or a select board member will ask a very substantive question in the meeting. And then the board of select says, "We don't have enough information to make this decision." And it can make things draw out. So one thing is, if you do read your board packets in advance, it's a really great practice to provide a heads up to the chair and to Jerry that you have this question, because they might be able to get the information for the whole board to see before the meeting. And in which case, you can actually maybe make a decision. Now, that's not always gonna happen. There will be things where you're gonna wanna ask the question in the meeting, because it just occurs to you. That's fine. But to the extent that you can help move the whole process along by getting things out in advance, your questions out in advance, it helps. And that's one of the great reasons for having your packets published early, because it gives you all more time to do your homework.
I have a question about packets being published. So we see that information, but that's not published with the agenda. I have seen towns where that information is also posted with the agenda.
Oh, yes. So if you ask for information, you get an email back to you? Is that what you're saying?
No, so what I'm asking is, we post the agenda on the website.
Yep.
And some towns post the packet that the select board members get it with the agenda.
Yeah, like if somebody filed an application, or if you bring your own paper or something, or something.
Kind of, whatever it is.
Or if you've got a proposal to do some kind of.
Or even like, the town of Monmouth, that town manager, he, like, if he, every email that he gets from a resident, he posts in his, with the agenda. Like, the whole thing. I mean, I think that's excessive. What he posts is like 40 pages a week. I'm not asking that we do that. I'm just saying.
Sounds excessive to me.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking that we do that. I'm just, I'm just asking like what.
So I'm gonna put that question up there, and that's for you to decide with Jerry, what, what your preference is on that. Okay. Is there anything you wanna add on that?
Well, I was just gonna say, when, you know, we published council packets, what we published on our website was exactly what the council got.
Yeah, yeah. And that way, again, your information is becoming power that some people have and other people don't have access to.
Right.
Right? Because the whole idea of local government is to be really close to the people and be as transparent as you can be.
You wouldn't, you went to Payroll Learn and stuff like that, though, or did you?
No.
No, okay. Accounts payable.
And there'd be certain applications that might have private information you'd be disclosing exactly, so she would never put in the packet.
For, because I'm in those examples, like, assistance for fuel, things that you can't disclose. You gotta, you gotta be careful what you, you can't put everything in there.
And the public, and the public, the you don't need all that information, and the public doesn't need all that information.
Well, like, the department head reports, that would be.
Yep, department reports, any supporting material, if you're making a decision on a particular thing, whatever. You know, if Jerry's making a recommendation, or if he's done some research and is reporting back to you on something, all that would be included. Yeah, I never, I'll be honest with you, I never look at what you post, because I have it. So I've never looked at what's been posted.
You may wanna consider having that be the same, that what's posted is the same thing that you got. Right?
Yeah, I'm prepared either way.
Yeah.
Especially because a lot of our public comment period is the beginning of a meeting, rather than at the end after they see us discuss stuff. So I think that if people can review that online, it gives the public a better opportunity to give a more informed opinion, rather than saying, "I don't know what you all are gonna talk about on this issue, but this is what I think." And it might be something, they might have a concern that if they had a packet, it wouldn't even be a question.
That's great. So just a couple more things on this, about doing your homework. So I got, I got answers from the two of you, from Josh and Heather. But one other way to think about doing your homework, especially if you're new, if some of you are new, is to really try to understand the budget, because that's the most, you know, one of the most important documents that you've got. And that will take some time, sitting down with the town manager to experiment to you, to learn it. And the other thing is, this goes back to, you represent the whole community, like, every Durham resident is your constituent, is for you to do some homework and talk to people you don't usually talk to. You know, we all get in our bubbles. So figuring out, like, are there some people that might have a different perspective? And it would be great for you to listen to them and, and just enrich your understanding. This job is a job that I became humbler with as my time went on, because there are just so many different perspectives, and it's hard to know everything. And the more people you talk to that are different from you, the better, for you are gonna be when you're making decisions. And I know we're running on time. You can tell. We've got a tired lawyer over here. So gonna go to the next one. Is that all right?
I'm doing a lot with the select board meetings.
So right now, I wanted to ask you, what, what do you think is going really well right now when you guys meet? What works when you're, when you're meeting? Are you able to get to decisions and votes? Are you feeling like your opinions are listened to? Do you feel like you're moving business along?
I feel like this meeting is, was put on our schedule to get, to get some of those, to some of those points.
Okay. So, well, why don't I just go through some of those best practices? And we can raise issues that you might wanna, or questions that you wanna answer together as a board. You know, you are, again, you're the body that acts as a body. And so when you were elected, I knew this, like, I was talking to the people at my doors, when I was knocking on doors, and I was hearing from them what they wanted. But then, once you actually arrive at this desk, the most important people are the four of the people here, right? Like, that you need to figure out how to move each other on things that you think need to move forward. And you're also gonna need to be connected to each other and have good relationship. So there are a couple ways to do that. One is to always be respectful to each other, always be respectful to staff, and also be respectful to the public. And you are tone-setting, right? You need to lead by example for your community. We've seen a lot of communities come out and fall apart lately. You know, the tenor of discourse is low, let's say, and it's personal. So to try to always be thinking about, how do you keep it, you know, high, high and respectful? And that also means bringing to this table a spirit of collaboration. Now, even if you have your own thing that you really want the board to do, maybe you have a personal agenda, or maybe somebody else has a personal agenda and you don't think that's appropriate. You have to cooperate in order to run the town. And so being as open as you can in kind of a cooperative way when you arrive at the table. And this sounds a little woo-woo, but it really helps in the frame of mind that you bring to the table. The other thing I would say is that some people are naturally not gonna say very many words, and other people will say a lot. And so one of the jobs of the chair is to make sure that every voice has at least the time that they want. And that it's not being dominated by one or two people. So be mindful of the airtime that you take. And if your chair or your vice-chair is taking, running a meeting, make sure you try and solicit from people that are a little bit more introverted. Be clear on how you take and also respond to public comment. And I'll give you a couple of examples here. When I started Freeport, there was no time limit on public comment. And we had a few people that came and literally spoke at the podium for twenty minutes, which made for very long meetings. Yeah. So we instituted a timer while I was there, a three-minute timer. And we also instituted a rule where there was no back and forth between the council and that person. So that person might ask questions. The council chair would say, thank you for the question. And if you wanna get back to them later, you could promise that. If you just wanna say thank you for your question, you can do that. But you should be in agreement about how you handle that. And there are many different ways to do it. You can take the public comment just at the beginning of the agenda, which I think you referenced. You can take public comment on every item, you can take it at the end of the agenda. It's up to you how you handle it. But you should have an understanding of how you're gonna, how you're gonna approach it. Do you have that?
Yes, we do. Three minutes, no interaction.
Okay, great. I do wish public comment was after our discussion, because I think that our discussion could perhaps change public comment. I, I think that it's hard as a, a person coming to the meeting to have to talk about what it is that they, that is perhaps on the agenda before they hear the board discuss the item.
So do you take it at the start of the meeting only?
Yes.
You don't do it on each agenda item?
No.
Yeah, another way you can do it, but again, you'd have to discuss it, is that the item is presented by staff or whoever the person is who's presenting the item. Full thing, then you have the, the select board members ask clarifying questions. After that presentation material happens, you allow for public comment on the item. You close public comment, and then the board can then discuss in full, right, and come to a decision. Then you're informed by the public comment, and the public's, who's commenting, is informed by the staff presentation and your questions of staff.
I do love that.
I think that gets a little bit more to your, like, looking outside of your bubble, because, you know, everyone has their circle, people to engage with. I think that sometimes folks don't feel as interested in coming to our meetings to provide public comment because they're like, well, I can say, I'm very interested to hear what you're gonna talk about on this agenda, but they don't have any sort of feedback.
Yep.
And, you know, we have like a big social media page for people to pull up feedback, but I talk to a lot of people that don't use that, so they just don't feel that they can engage very well.
Okay, so I just gotta, we won't make any decisions tonight, but I'm just gonna say you might wanna explore changing my type of comment.
Can I just ask you?
Sure.
I had a, I don't know, six years ago or something, go up to I think you're asking or something, do something. And one of their, one of their things, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but that, that they didn't want the public involved in the actual discussion. They could give comments prior to. That seems like it opens the door up into now you have a group discussion on whatever policy or whatever.
Yeah, you don't want that.
Yeah.
It's different between discussion.
Yeah, that, that's.
You really don't want that.
So wait, so the way that I was describing it is like, you have the presentation of the content, and you guys ask questions first. Then you open public comment, the public commenters can say whatever they want, you close public comment.
They're not asking questions, they're just able to say what they wanna say about it. So we get their perspective.
No, it would be after you ask clarifying questions. Okay, so you, yeah.
See, I thought it was, that's where I think I'm getting confused. I thought it was before we start our thing, like, you open it to the public to let them say their, so the select board can hear it, and the person making the presentation can hear it, so they can address it.
Yeah.
And then you close public comment, and then the presenter presents or whatever, and then the board, you know, if they elect to, if they move it forward to have discussion, can go from there, but not in the order that.
Let, let me, let me say it one more time, because it's, it is a little confusing, so.
Give us just a big example that might help.
Okay.
So like when Chief was coming to talk about needing more money for the fire truck, he presented that to us. We asked him some clarifying questions, and then we had a discussion about whether we would allocate up to nine ninety-nine. Would this be like, Chief presents and he needs more money, we ask clarification, why, how much, like, whatever. Public comment for three minutes for someone to say, I don't think you should get it, I do think you should get, thank you for your comment, and then we discuss. Is that the system it is?
That's what I'm saying.
I'm sorry. But this, I'm sorry to pick on you, Joe, but this is one of the issues we've been having recently, is that there is a lot of interrupting. And, and that is something that, I mean, I'm trying to listen, I get distracted. And, and I know what happened to me, and I know I was making faces at one meeting because two people said something to me. And, and you know what? Nobody over here noticed, other people noticed. Because you can't finish sentences without being interrupted sometimes. And that is something that we need to work.
Who's chair? Your chair.
Yep.
Okay. So you have, you have kind of the responsibility for protecting everybody here, ability to be heard.
I agree.
Right? So if, and actually interrupting, we all do it, right? We all interrupt each other, and it's really annoying. So if there's a way that you can set an expectation that nobody says anything until one person stops talking. Now, if somebody talks a really, really long time, it means that other people wanna jump in and interrupt. So this gets back to the airtime thing. You need to be conscious of yourself, of not taking a very long time to express yourself because you've got a clock, right? So I would say, Joe, this is your responsibility to try to ask people to not interrupt. And if they are interrupting, maybe you can come up with like a funny way to do it, so you're not like getting mad at each other, but like a roses and daisies, all right, let Joe finish his thought, let Heather finish her thought. You know, just so that you can address this, because it sounds like it's a cultural issue on the board right now. Yeah. So, respect for each other and listening. You all got real serious remarks. So this sounds like it's a real issue, huh?
I, I think it is an issue. I do think, no question, that's something that we need to work on. It hasn't, it hasn't, it's been, I think, what it is, is the reason, one of the reasons why I was more inclined to this is because it's an educational component to especially people just getting on the board that I think needs to take place. So, you know, when, when you, when you first, like, I'll, I'll use the school board, I'll get this board out of that. Typically, the school board, they'll say, hey, just vote for about six months, see the wings of things and see what's going on, and feel, feel what's going on and things of that nature. You know, like, I think, I don't wanna speak for Joe, and I don't wanna speak for this Joe, but like, for example, that example, I really wouldn't be inclined to that either as far as public comment, because that's a select board decision, not everything needs public comment. So that particular one of that example is, it's up, the select board has the discretion to spend up that kind of money. So it doesn't necessarily require town approval or individual approval. Yeah, the, the point of order and, you know, just the, just the, just the how the meetings are conducted per se needs to be sharpened up and so forth.
So I just saw a great best practice here, which is Heather, you raise your hand, and then Joe, you raise your hand. One way that you can handle this, Joe, is you could actually recognize the speaker before. And on the Freeport Council, there's seven people, so the interruption thing is really a big problem. So, right when you have more people. So you could say, Joe, you know, select board member, Heather, Roy, right? Or you could, you could say, you could actually do that, and you can raise your hands to be recognized by the chair.
I often do, that's how we, that's how we do it. On the budget committee, I was on the budget committee, and we all, we raise our hand to speak on the budget committee. And then the chair would acknowledge us. Are you acknowledging me or no?
I am acknowledging you, yeah. And then I'll go to Joe, yeah.
Wait, what did you just say?
I don't know, I say, well, what I said on that particular one is when it's
Oh, oh.
There's certain things that the public should have a lot of input in, and I agree with that. But there's certain things that people elected you for a reason, that you should be making a decision, and you shouldn't be tying down a board with lengthy public discussion for hours on end on something that a board should be capable of facilitating.
You can choose what, what to have public comment on, which items, which option.
I, I do, and I think a better example might have been sort of the issue we're having about writing off some, some of the EMT bills.
Right, right.
And, and I think that would be deserving of some public comment.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and so, but I
So I think.
I do agree it can be limited, but I think.
I'll let you say it, yes. Heather first and then Joe.
So there, we do have parameters, right? I don't think it turns into a discussion if we're setting it up the way that you're suggesting. There is the three-minute time limit, right? So, and, and no, and I'm not suggesting that we allow for open roundtable discussion. I think no one attends our meetings, and if a resident has come here and feels that it's important enough to come here and sit at this table, which is not easy for a lot of people to do, and voice their opinion on something, that we should acknowledge that out of respect for that person. I don't think, I'm not asking to open it up to a roundtable discussion, I'm just asking for people to have the opportunity to be able to give an opinion if they feel strongly enough to come here in the first place to say something to us about it.
So, one thing, I just wanna point out, this happens, and I know I'm guilty of it, but like, I was asking a clarifying question, and before you could answer, we had an interruption, they went into a substantive debate on the issue. Whereas I was trying to ask a clarifying question. And so, in a lot of other boards I work with where we have like Robert's Rules of Orders, you're asking a clarifying question, this isn't where you debate. Once you get the information, you then begin debate. I feel like sometimes we get lost in that, it's, I'm trying to figure out if I understand your statement. And then it's like, oh, I think we've done this way, and I don't agree with it. It's like, that's not my question. It's whether we should do it that way, trying to understand. So I think that more structured in a way where it's like, this is where you ask your points of clarification or points of information, and then you're moving into discussion. And that's where I think, Joe, as the chair, can facilitate. This is a discussion, you're debating the topic, we're asking, we're saving debate till after we have the information, you know.
This is also an area where the board has to decide how it operates, how you conduct your business. I mean, you've still got to deal with the, the boundaries of state law, the boundaries of case law. But you have pretty wide latitude in how you conduct your meetings, and that's for the five of you to decide. You know, as far as agenda setting and some other things, I mean, you know, by all means, I don't need to exclude Jerry. I know, you know, as manager, you know, I was very interested in how the council did its work because the only way things get done really is if we work together. So, you know, if Jerry is working on putting the agendas together, having a clear process, so he knows how things, you know, come into the hopper to go on the agenda, how it gets decided what goes on the agenda. Some things, like routine stuff, I just put on the agenda because it had to be done. It, it didn't relate to a council priority, it was just, you know, vicious permits, okay, fine, they're gonna go on there.
The manager has a lot of latitude on that. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to a couple more slides and, oh, except that I had one other thing to say on that. We, sorry. Which is, make sure you know what meeting rules you're using. I don't know if you, are you defaulting to Robert's rules?
I don't think we have.
Okay, so you're gonna.
And it's a Robert's Rule. I think that's why I raised my hand was, it's, I can't tell you if we have these rules in place, Robert's Rules is in place, it's typically every year the chair will say, we're going by Robert's Rules in consideration.
Yeah.
I think, I think what this board should consider, if we don't have this, is actually defining these issues. Because what I, what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing is, you know, the board is, you know, continuity for just my six, seven years, and you have continuity of a board, and procedures have been X, Y, and Z for the last, in my case, seven years. And then every time you adopt a new member or a new member is elected, the whole process gets reshuffled, and I think, I think that's what some of the issue is, is maybe, maybe we didn't necessarily like the way the board was run before, now we get elected, now we wanna change everything how it's run.
Yeah.
But if we could establish just, what do you wanna do? And I don't know legally if that, does that go on perpetuity, for lack of a better word? Like, could we set that as a, can we set that as a Durham policy? I know the next board could say, hey, we're changing policy, but at least there's something established or something.
Well, the, the select board doesn't change all at once, typically. Now, it's been known to happen, but it doesn't typically change all at once. So if, if this board were to adopt rules of, rules of procedure that establish how you're gonna set agendas, how you're going to conduct business, when you're going to have public comment on things and when you're not, those rules are rules that apply to you and to, you know, as far as agenda setting and stuff like that might apply to Jerry, but they're really your rules. And it's up to the next board. Or even if you get to a point, this year, and say, wow, that part's not really working, let's change it.
Sure.
As long as the board votes to decide to change it, then it's changed. And a subsequent board could come in and say, we'd like to change these rules. But until the select board, once you've adopted them, unless the select board changes them, they're your rules.
Yeah, what I was trying to, I don't know if anybody can say definitively, definitively, I can either, if we actually have rules in place.
I've asked multiple times before becoming a board member, and they've, the, the answer that I was always given is that we go by Title Thirty A and it's home rule that governs us.
I think there's a, there's a real opportunity here for you to write this stuff down, consider it. We're not gonna answer it, I'll be, we're gonna, we're gonna say, here are the questions that we think. Yeah, here, answer these questions together, then write it up, adopt it, and then modify it as you need to.
And so I, my question about, is that something that generally GPCon provides facilitation services and helps craft those sorts of things? Because I think that sometimes with things that, there's generally gonna be disagreement, having a facilitator that's a third party can be beneficial.
Yeah. We're happy to do that, like this, and we won't go into a big crap hole here. But you pay us dues, and there's a certain amount of work that we can do for you within those dues, like this workshop is including your dues. If you had a really big job for us, right, like you said, we want you to draft our entire rules and procedures, we probably need to charge a fee just to cover our time, and we could facilitate those workshops. I mean, that Jerry and we can talk about, we can, as a result of this workshop, we can give you a crib sheet of here are the questions that we heard that you still need to answer. And you can do with them what you can, and then if you need our help, you know, on just another night like this, we can do that for free. It depends on how large the job is for us.
Or even perhaps just provide examples of other towns that you think makes them. Yeah, you know, because, I mean, a board that has nine members is gonna operate very differently than a board that has five, which is also gonna operate very differently than a board that has three, and you probably have more knowledge of what that looks like versus me going in there and town by town trying to figure out who has what, and then they have their policies posted online.
I think a written policy is beneficial, because then at that first meeting where you're adopting the chair or voting in a chair, you're then voting to accept the previous board's written rules to adopt moving forward, or you make amendments to say, we're gonna run off like that. But then, it's just like, we don't, like, all these questions, we don't have the answer, and even Rich scheme on the board for seven years, like, it might be up there somewhere, but we don't know, we know how we've done it, and I think that gets back to the transparency thing.
I think the board is always trying to, or has in the past, trying to operate as previous boards and so forth, to try and keep continuity in the past. Where we had, for example, before Kevin, that was Jeffrey, then he was on this board forever, so it was never. And then there was this head with Kevin's, by the book, you talk about a guy that does the homework, he is the epitome of the homework. He's gonna go and read every single possible thing, research it to expose his stuff, so. We just, we're not at that level yet. We're hoping to get there, but we definitely need some help getting there. We're, we're trying to navigate some waters that we don't necessarily have a map to.
We'll give you a follow-up, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll give you a follow-up.
I think the way that I keep thinking about this is that, like, I joined the Soccer Booster Officers, right, and nothing existed. There was no, and, and so nobody wants to volunteer because you're stepping into a role, you have no idea what to do, you have no idea, you know. And so Victoria Winters created everything in this Google Drive so that the next elected officer gets handed this packet where everything is clearly defined, which makes the person stepping into that role and volunteering, right? And so I would love to see that type of thing for us to create, that kind of thing, so that as the board changes, there is continuity as we go forward. As, you know, maybe we're all gonna sit here for twenty years, I don't know. I get the feeling you're not, but.
The people of the, the people of the community change too, so.
Right.
You know, saying, we've done, no, this isn't a slight at your statement, but saying, you know, we're just doing it the way all the other boards have done it. Like, there are people I know who were literally born in Durham, and they're seventy-nine years old, so they've been here for seventy-nine years. They, they might have a perspective on how it happened, whereas folks like me who moved in the last decade, folks who might be moving in here, especially like town rules, they say, well, we've done it this way in the past, and you say, well, where's the written down procedure? Well, it's just something we've kind of passed on. It, that's where it becomes a little bit more difficult.
Joe, there is procedure. We do follow MMAs and VICE and things of that nature.
I'm talking about these things that we highlight here.
I know, but listen, I don't want you to make it sound like we're running rogue over here, and we're just clapping off the whim of our pants. It sounds like that, unfortunately. You know, we do follow a procedure that's been in place for years, and we incorporate, we, we, we do a lot of asking questions via MMA.
and we incorporate, we, we, we do a lot of asking questions via MMA, we do a lot of asking questions via our town attorney. We don't just run a meeting at whatever will that we want, run it, there is a, there is a standard, for lack of better words.
So, I'm just gonna note something about the interaction I just saw there, right? Which is just a little like, right? And, um, and the things that I just heard that each of you said, they weren't at all incompatible.
Oh, yeah.
You both spoke your own truth, and they were actually totally compatible. So, I, I just wanted to point that out, because I think it kind of comes back to thinking about this spirit of cooperation, and thinking that each of you is actually coming from a perspective, it might be a different perspective, but I can tell all of you are really good-hearted people that have come here to serve your community. So, just, just think about that, because I think you guys can do a lot of great work together. And I see this dynamic of people who've lived in town for a really long time, and new people who come into town, that seems to be us versus them thing that happens in a lot of towns. And yet, like, there's good stuff that comes from both, and your job is to meld it, because you're representing that kind of different, those two different perspectives. Now, I have a question for the chair and for Jerry, where over time, we've got one more issue, it's around communications, so it's kind of a big one. Do you wanna call quits tonight, or do you wanna do one more, one more slide?
How long about one slide, you're asking?
Depends on how much you wanna talk about. I could just go over the, the best practices and leave it at that without discussion? Does that seem like the way to do it?
And revisit at a later date, or?
Will you talk to Jerry about, Jerry with what?
Yeah, we've all, we've, we've, what, probably it sounded good.
You'll have us.
Okay, all right, so the next one is on good communications, and I told you we get to social media. So, there are two kinds of communications to think about. One is the official communications of the town to the residents. And then the other kind is how you individually are talking to constituents. So, this first one is about the town communications. So, um, I think I gotta answer this question, sort of shorten it, shorten our discussion. How does the town of Durham communicate with residents? I know you do it through your website, and you also have a Facebook page.
Yep, news blast sometimes.
As a news blast, okay. So, that's all really good, because you are putting out regular information, and you're doing it through multiple official channels, you know, so you're reaching as many people as possible. So, that's a best practice you've already got down pat. Another best practice is to try to have a policy that, that can provide some guidance to your employees, especially as they're using social media, because social media is set up to be interactive. And just like your public comment period, you can get some nasty stuff, you get people that are throwing arrows personally, you can get people that disagree with policies that you voted on. So, you need to figure out how you want your staff to handle that. Some towns have, like, block all comments, you can't comment on their Facebook. Others wanna engage their residents and have somebody who's monitoring that. But you also have to know how you're gonna deal with anything that's pornographic, anything that's like really hate speech, things like that. So, you need to think ahead about that. And many, many towns have social media policies that apply to the employees who are doing the posting to provide, you know, basically to protect you as you're doing that. So, um, so that's it on that, and the next slide.
So, a quick question about clarifying question. Those social media policies are that for people when they're interacting on town, official town meetings? Or like their own?
Not personal.
Not personal, I mean, you really should try to avoid having any personal postings be about town business.
So, I share town business constantly, like, I, I, well, like myself, but also I'll go to Town of Durham Facebook page and share that to the All Things Durham, which has like 4,000.
So, let me go to my next slide, because that's about your individual communications.
Okay.
Okay? And there's some guidance around that, that you can adopt or not, right? And many towns don't try to put any policies in place that govern how you talk about town business individually when you're talking to residents, because we've got the First Amendment, right? All of you have protected free speech as individuals. That said, social media can be great for getting out information. It can also really create a toxic environment amongst your residents, and also between you, possibly. And so, you wanna approach it pretty carefully, okay? If you, and, and this gets back to the spirit of cooperation, you're all here to serve the residents, you all have to get along, and you are leaders that are gonna be setting the tone of discourse in your town. So, you want it to be respectful, okay? So, the first thing is to lead by example, and, you know, as you are communicating with constituents, make sure you wanna see it's light on the front page if it came out. Make sure that you are not insulting people, or insinuating insults, right? Again, we have way too much of that in our country, and to the extent that all of our boards in our region can do a better job, we're just gonna be able to govern better and do better for our residents. The second thing is to make sure that you're sharing accurate and factual information. A really good way to do that is to link back to the town website, right? You're not making it up, you're not interpreting stuff, you're not throwing stuff out there that's opinion, that's not factually based. Again, we have way too much misinformation out there. So, whatever you can do to keep it to the facts, better. These are some of my personal opinions here, just watching what's going on in the region. You, you're free to disregard them, because you have your First Amendment rights. But this is what I'm thinking about for the good of the town. You're always, always gonna wanna distinguish whether the communication is a personal communication or one from the town. So, you, if you say, um, can I pick on you?
Yeah, of course, absolutely.
So, Council Board Roy says that, uh, you know, it's, you, you post on your Facebook that it's great to vote, it's June 13th, get out and vote. You wanna make sure that you're saying this as Heather, not representing the board of selectmen, not representing the towns. So, you're gonna wanna make sure you distinguish, this is my personal Facebook page, or this is my, this is my select board page, it's personal, it's not affiliated with official town communications. So, you wanna make sure you make that distinction. And then, you also, if you're out there on social media, you could get really negative comments, you could get harassment. Unfortunately, a lot of women, and I'm talking to you again, a lot of women get a lot of harassment in this region. Um, if you're a person of color, you tend to get more harassment. There are people that I've talked to that are in elected office who said, I can't take it anymore, I'm not gonna run again. Um, I did wanna share with you, um, a, a, a quick note that we saw from the town manager at Naples. He just resigned, and the select board chair said he was like one of the best town managers around. And this is what he wrote in his resignation letter. He said, the criticisms from those in the public and hidden behind social media keyboards, and don't take the time to understand what local government is doing, is destructive to this community. Perceptions without facts are dividing Naples. It has taken a negative toll on my, on me health-wise, and I've decided it's best to shift back to a less public-facing position. So, this is real, right? Like, Naples lost a really good town manager because of what was happening in the public discourse on, on social media. So, um, for you all, again, to lead, it's a way to protect staff, it's also a way to protect yourself. But you are gonna get nasty stuff, so you need to think about how you're gonna respond to it. Are you gonna be nasty back, are you gonna block, are you gonna try to give a good professional response? Are you gonna let it lie? You're, you'll wanna think that through, probably many of you are already active on social media and have thought that through. And then the last thing I've suggested here is you could have a code of conduct, or a code of ethics that you agree to as a board of selectmen, and you hold each other to. Um, it's not gonna be legal necessarily, right? Because again, you've got First Amendment, but you could do that if you wanted to have some expectations of one another about how you are individually communicating, particularly in social media.
Do you know of select boards in the region that have code of conducts like that? That could share what something like that might look like?
I looked for some today, I did a very quick search, I didn't find much. I found quite a bit of social media policies that are adopted by the town, and help the, protect the employees and guide the employees, but not very much that's out there for your select board.
Don't, don't we have?
I don't really use Facebook, so I don't, I never look to see if we have, I don't, I don't post.
We got something, I don't, it's, it's, I think it's mostly regarding the employees.
Not a code of conduct necessarily, but I thought there was something when, when I started last year.
Yeah, well, I think we, again, this goes back to like what people say or don't, you know, mean as far as, you know, what the understanding is, whether it's in writing or not, like, it's, it's always, it's, you're free to have. Like, Heather's, Heather's a big social media person, I personally, I don't, you know, haven't sure if you're on there. Well, you, you don't know, other than your kids. But as far as like, it's okay to have an opinion, as long as you said my opinion. But once you get to the board, you have to make sure that you're not coming off as, hey, this is the opinion of the board.
Right, so I was actually really curious, so someone had said, what was the robocall about? And I said, the school, um, or asking people to get out to vote for the school budget, and I immediately edited my comment and said, vote on the school budget.
Yeah.
Because.
That's a good.
Right? I, I, and I was like, yes, way to catch that before anybody even had a chance to read it.
Yeah.
And so then today, like, we do the news blast, and it's kind of like little graphics with like, where the polling place is, or we need a board member for the historic commissioner or whatever. And so, I'll just share those right from the town page, no commentary, no nothing, just so that it gets over in that All Things Durham page, because so many more people see it there.
Yeah, that, that's great, right? You're just, you're disseminating information, it's official information, that's fine. Yeah, and, you know, again, you could say, vote for the budget, Heather, you could say, vote for the budget, and just say, this is my opinion.
Yeah.
You know, I serve on a select board, I'm representing myself, I, I urge you to vote for the budget.
Fine.
Right? You know, but, but all of you need to, it's good for you guys to have an understanding that it's fine. And it's good if you decide that you don't think that that's appropriate, that you decide that together.
So, my question is, like, because we're not like just cogs in a wheel, moving things along, we are, you know, representatives, and we do have our own personal opinion, and we bring that to the board. I don't post to social media, but could somebody post to, that's on the select board, post to like the All Things Durham page and say, this is a big thing that's gonna be voted on in town, I ran that I was gonna be against this, I'm gonna continue to be against this, please make sure your voice is heard.
Absolutely.
Because I think, I, I just like, I don't want us to model ourselves of what they do in Washington, because that's not very nice, but I know that like, you do see representatives and even in the US, they say, here's what I think, and we know that they're not talking about the entire board, but we know that they're talking about their opinion.
Yeah, you just wanna make sure you say that, right? That you wanna be clear that you're speaking for yourself, and you're not representing the official position of the town or the board.
That, that, that's the point, they're sharing the accurate, factual information. If, if, even if it's, if you're, you know, even if it's a hot topic on social media, I, 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 just, just so we're, I come from a world of, of security clearances and, and, and contracts that I'm not allowed to talk about any of this stuff. My, my view of all of the things we do on the board, I treat it somewhat the same way. I'm not going to go out there and necessarily share that. I don't necessarily allow myself to do that in any situation that I'm in from a business perspective. I get it that it's all public knowledge, but it's all public knowledge under a controlled aspect of being released. It's not just releaseable necessarily, just wide open, I get the First Amendment, right? So, if you have an opinion, great, but my recommendation is usually hold back from that, that extra opinion of whether you, whether you know the answer or not. It, 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 you can help somebody by linking them to the site, but link them to, say, the ordinance, and the ordinance has your answer. Don't give them your actual interpretation of the ordinance.
Yeah, I did that with the trash, somebody asked about trash question, and I just linked it to the trash.
It's, I'm not, I'm not, you can't, not pick on that, I'm just saying, if you, if you just think about it and hold yourself back from, from actually putting yourself in, I'll say, somewhat jeopardy from your position here on the board, holding back is sometimes better, you know? Leaving it overnight even is better, and then come back and say, do I really need to answer this? Or is this just something, I say, hey, you know what, you should contact the town hall about that, right? That's kind of a, that, that, the viewpoint I take on it, I honestly try not to, you know, comment, other than like somebody putting flowers out, or having eggs, or meat available, or whatever.
The really benign stuff.
Yeah, the benign stuff.
Everyone's gonna choose how to handle it.
Hey, if you're liking someone's flowers, you're not liking my flowers.
I was just gonna, I just wanna clarify, because I do care about your opinion, I really do. It, does it, it, does it bother you if I share information like I did about where? Someone had asked a question about where to vote, and so I just shared the town post in there.
That, that's, yeah, I'm sorry, that, that's fine, I, I have no problem with that stuff. Sharing information, again, after the after information, I, I don't have any problem with, um, but sharing information, you know, that, 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 that projects a potential board opinion over the, over the internet is a problem, I think, and that's, that's where I, I, I usually have a problem.
Yeah, I haven't seen that happen, have you seen that happen?
So, let me, let me ask, can I, can I interrupt you just in the interest of time? Is this, um, how, how the town externally communicates, or how you externally communicate? Is that something you want more discussion on?
I mean, I think it could, could be helpful. I personally, it's not an issue I work with, I don't post anything. But I do understand that people could say, I should be able to share my opinion as a board member, saying, this is the facts, but there is a judgment column whether we should imp, like, resource protection. I never posted a single thing, and it's like, this is the facts of the implication, and here's how I feel about it. And like, I feel like a board member should be able to publicly share whether they are personally for or against, so people know where the board members stay. But I think if you're saying, and this is gonna do this, which is absolutely not right, correct? That's where you're going to, so, it's not something I'm personally gonna engage with, but I could see how there could be a benefit to discussing. So, if there are very active social media people in the future, there'd be some guidance.
It's just a really good thing to do to try to, say, refrain yourself from being out there in that capacity. And again, back to First Amendment, I, I don't have any problem with that, you know, sharing the opinion and stuff, but, again, making sure, it's more of a protection.
Yeah.
For the board integrity than anything else.
Oh, that would be awesome.
Oh, yeah, that would be great.
But one thing I'd have to say is, so, so you guys are not all in harmony on this issue, so I am gonna, like, I'm hearing that you actually have quite different opinions on this, so I am gonna put it up here, maybe a little bit of work on that. I'm gonna wrap, because it's really late, but I'm gonna just quickly review the next kind of issues that are left to resolve for you, and we'll put this in a write-up of a memo.
Okay, okay.
So, really quickly, um, figuring out how, how much work can be done, and what work is gonna be done within your existing resources, coming up with some policies around how board members get and share information with staff, and how to handle your email correspondence, and what's in the packets, those published in the packets. Developing a process for setting kind of your annual priorities, this is outside of the capital investment plan. Uh, exploring how you can update ordinances based on fresh data. It may mean that you also update the complaint, it could be that you need to just pay special attention to facts. How, is it appropriate for the board of selectmen to give some direction to other boards? We talked specifically about the planning board. Putting together a Jerry and George facilitated workshop between the planning board and the board of selectmen. Figuring out how the agenda gets set, and how to deal with time-sensitive new items within that framework, and setting some rules around that. Figuring out exactly what authority, what expectations you have of the chair. We talked about the agenda packet. Exploring any changes that you might make to how you gather public comment in your public meetings, and defining how the process of discussing that item happens when you insert public comment, and what's the expectation, what are the rules that you're using, is it Roberts' rules or something else? And maybe some guidance around social media, or at least a statement around it. Does that seem, like, I captured the big things?
Yes.
Little ones up there?
Seem really redundant.
This is big, but, I mean.
Oh, it doesn't get really big, all right.
And even if there are select board rules or procedures somewhere, if you can't find them, pick up your own.
Yeah.
You adopt them.
Right.
And that becomes the rule.
Did you get what you wanted out tonight? I know we didn't do all of the things out here.
I think I was under the impression it was gonna be a little bit of a different workshop, but I feel like this was still very valid.
I agree.
So, I feel like I got more than I expected, which is, oh, good.
I agree.
That is, that's good.
If you are going to, I, I would love to see what other towns' boards that you feel are comparable, like, you know, member account-wise, if that's something that we can. See, this is where I would be asking the chief for something, and then looking at Jerry, because I think I made a mistake. You're not a lawyer, I just spoke.
We'll put a little memo together for you that outlines this with a little bit more detail and context, and we'll talk with Jerry about what the appropriate next steps are, what GPCon can, can do for you within existing resources, okay?
Perfect, this is great.
Yeah, Jerry, was this helpful? Yeah, Jerry, was this helpful?
Yeah.